Good evening, welcome to the September 16th Cabarrus County Board of Education Business Session. The Board has just reconvened an open session from closed session. Board members, I'd like to move to 4.04. One, where we will take a motion to approve the closed session minutes and make them confidential for August the 5th and the 12th.
Second.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Floyd, and a second by Ms. Escobar. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The closed session minutes are approved as presented. We will move to 4.02. I call for a motion to approve our personnel report.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Walter, a second by Ms. Lindsay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The personnel report is approved as presented. Board members will move to 5.01, our presentation of colors and our national anthem. If you'll please stand.
Presenting our nation's colors, tonight, our members of the J.M. Robinson High School, Air Force, J.R.O.T.C., and their personnel includes Cadet Senior Airman Caitlin Pauls, Cadet Senior Master Sergeant Giannella Chiraboga, Cadet Major Jesuira Ocampo, and Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Maria Green.
Colors? Henry. Colors? Come. Right, heads. Forward, hearts.
Honoring America tonight with the playing of our national anthem were members of the Hickory Ridge High School Band in their brand-new marching band uniforms. And their personnel includes Zoe Dimkowski, Jacob Freidenberg, Adam Seer, Noah Brumba, Caitlin Lewis, Ryan Morrison, and Tegan Rivas. The directors at Hickory Ridge High School are Mr. David Rivera and Mr. Chris White. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, board members, we're going to move to 6.01. We're going to adopt the agenda. And we are going to change one of the agenda items. Ms. Lindsay would like us to move the Opportunity School GMP off of the consent agenda and on to the action agenda. It would be 13.03. So with that change, I will call for a motion to approve the agenda as presented with the change. Same move.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Lindsay, a second by Mr. Floyd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved as presented. We will move to 7.01, our Impact Through Education Awards with Mr. Phil Furr. Welcome.
Good evening. Madam Chair, members of the Board, Dr. Kupicki. Tonight, we will present Impact Through Education Awards to students and staff at W.M. Irvin Elementary School and H.E. Winkler Middle School. Our sponsors for the Impact Awards are our friends at Equitable. At this time, I would like to invite our Equitable representative Leo Spardella to join me at the front of the room. Before we get started with the awards, please accept, I should say, your thanks and gratitude to Equitable for its continued partnership with the Impact Through Education Awards. Tonight, we will begin our 15th year of honoring those making an impact in our schools with this award. We appreciate your support, and thank you for helping us celebrate and recognize deserving students and staff. We also want to say a word of thanks to our Cabarrus Regional Chamber and to Concord Trophy Center for providing us with the award plaques each month. Now, on to tonight's awards. May I have the W.M. Irvin Elementary School administrative team come forward, please? Our first honoree from Irvin is Archer Barber. Archer, please come forward with your family.
Archer Barber is a remarkable individual who embodies what it means to be an outstanding student both in and out of the classroom. His kindness, willingness to help others, and calm maturity set him apart as a leader and role model for his peers. Archer's leadership is rooted in empathy and integrity, and he consistently strives to do the right thing inspiring everyone around him. Throughout his time at school, Archer has demonstrated politeness, compassion, and responsibility. He excels academically and has in his passion for baseball, showing an impressive work ethic. His respectfulness, ambition, and inclusivity make him a positive force in our school community. His teacher says that having a million students like Archer would be a dream come true. Archer, your commitment to giving your best every day is truly appreciated, and we're incredibly proud of your growth and the impact you've made at W.M. Irvin. Keep leading and inspiring others. Congratulations, Archer. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for W.M. Irvin Elementary School.
Irvin is Gabrielle Delano. Gabrielle, please come forward with your family.
Gabrielle Delano truly embodies the spirit of excellence and kindness in our community. She is a remarkable student whose hard work and curiosity shine in everything she does. Gabby's recent success as a spelling bee winner is just one example of her dedication, but what makes her truly special is her positive approach to life and learning. Gabby's infectious smile and kind words brighten the classroom, making her a joy to be around. Her calming presence and focus make her a natural leader who inspires others. She's also an exceptional listener and a diligent student, even reflected in the beauty and precision of her handwriting. Beyond academics, Gabby's generosity, reliability, and honesty endear her to everyone she meets. Her empathy, willingness to help others, and sense of humor make her a delight in every sense. Her teacher says Gabby is a joy to have in class and an inspiration to those around her. Her kindness, hard work, and dedication set a shining example for us all. Congratulations, Gabby. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for W.M. Irvin Elementary School.
Irvin is support staff member Christine Barbie. Ms. Barbie, please come forward with your family.
Today, we honor an exceptional individual whose contributions to W.M. Irvin Elementary have been extraordinary. It is with great pleasure that we recognize the MVP Utility Player, Christine Barbie, for her excellence, compassion, and unwavering commitment to the students and community of W.M. Irvin. In a school where roles are often fluid, Ms. Barbie consistently steps up to every challenge with enthusiasm and grace. She tackles every task, big or small, with excellence and a shining example for us all. Her approach to working with students is marked by compassion and genuine kindness, always putting their needs first. Ms. Barbie's generosity and willingness to help are evident in everything she does. Whether assisting with a project, supporting a colleague, or offering a kind word, she brings warmth and selflessness to every situation. Her sense of humor adds a joyful touch to our school, brightening even the busiest days. Today, we celebrate not only her accomplishments, but her spirit. Ms. Barbie, thank you for your dedication, compassion, and humor. You make W.M. Irvin a better place, and we're incredibly grateful to celebrate you as the MVP Utility Player. Congratulations, Christine. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for W.M. Irvin Elementary School.
Irvin is teacher Melissa Burris. Ms. Burris, please come forward with your family.
Today, we celebrate Melissa Burris, a remarkable individual who has made an indelible mark on our school community. For the past 26 years, Ms. Burris has been a cornerstone at W.M. Irvin Elementary, one of the original eagles who has shaped our journey from the very beginning. She has worn many hats over the years, always demonstrating an unwavering commitment to our students and staff. Ms. Burris's leadership is best illustrated by her ability to build collective teacher efficacy. She guides us through changes with grace and vision, fostering an environment where others can thrive. Her solution-oriented mindset and balance of honest feedback with compassion make her an exceptional leader. Known for her dedication, Ms. Burris approaches her work with a spirit of resilience and optimism, inspiring us to focus on the bigger picture. Today, we honor you, Ms. Burris, for your tireless efforts and the profound difference you've made in our lives. You've uplifted us all with your strength, kindness, and leadership. Congratulations, Melissa. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for W.M. Irvin Elementary School.
And finally, from W.M. Irvin is teacher Melissa Burris. Ms. Burris, please come forward with your family.
Today, we celebrate Melissa Burris, a remarkable individual who has made an indelible mark on our school community. For the past 26 years, Ms. Burris has been a cornerstone at W.M. Irvin Elementary, one of the original eagles who has shaped our journey from the very beginning. She has worn many hats over the years, always demonstrating an unwavering commitment to our students and staff. Ms. Burris's leadership is best illustrated by her ability to build collective teacher efficacy. She guides us through changes with grace and vision, fostering an environment where others can thrive. Her solution-oriented mindset and balance of honest feedback with compassion make her an exceptional leader. Known for her dedication, Ms. Burris approaches her work with a spirit of resilience and optimism, inspiring us to focus on the bigger picture. Today, we honor you, Ms. Burris, for your tireless efforts and the profound difference you've made in our lives. You've uplifted us all with your strength, kindness, and leadership. Congratulations, Melissa. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for W.M. Irvin Elementary School.
We will now continue with our September Impact Through Education Awards by welcoming H.E. Winkler Middle School. May I have the Winkler administrative team come forward, please?
Our first honoree from Winkler Middle School is Thomas Eisenhauer. Thomas, please come forward with your family. It is an honor to recognize Thomas Eisenhauer as an exemplary recipient of the Impact Through Education Award. As a student leader at Harold E. Winkler Middle School, Thomas consistently demonstrates a commitment to excellence in academics and his interactions, both which embody the very qualities of initiative, hard work, and respect that this award represents. Thomas's dedication to his studies is evident in his outstanding academic performance, where he approaches each challenge with a blend of creativity and perseverance. His work ethic is matched by his integrity and respect for others, qualities that have made him a respected figure amongst peers and staff alike. Beyond the classroom, Thomas's leadership shines through his active roles within the school community. He plays a key role in various school initiatives, demonstrating proactive leadership in every task he undertakes. Whether leading a project, mentoring fellow students, or participating in school events, Thomas's contributions are marked by a genuine desire to make a positive impact. Thomas also excels as an athlete, balancing his responsibilities on the Harold Winkler Middle School track team with his involvement in a community competitive swimming program. His commitment to these activities highlights his ability to manage time effectively while maintaining a high level of performance both academically and athletically. His respectful demeanor and unwavering dedication have left a lasting impression on both staff and students at Winkler Middle. Thomas's combination of hard work, initiative, and respect for others not only makes him a deserving recipient of the Impact Through Education Award, but also positions him as a promising leader with a very bright future ahead. Congratulations, Thomas. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Winkler Middle School.
Our next honoree from Winkler is Aubrey Stefaniac. Aubrey, please come forward with your family.
It is an honor to recognize Aubrey Stefaniac as an outstanding recipient of the Impact Through Education Award. As a student leader at Harold E. Winkler Middle School, Thomas consistently demonstrates a commitment to excellence in academics and his interactions, both which embody the very qualities of initiative, hard work, and respect that this award represents. Thomas's dedication to his studies is evident in his outstanding academic performance, where he approaches each challenge with a blend of creativity and perseverance. His work ethic is matched by his integrity and respect for others, qualities that have made him a respected figure amongst peers and staff alike. Beyond the classroom, Thomas's leadership shines through his active roles within the school community. He plays a key role in various school initiatives, demonstrating proactive leadership in every task he undertakes. Whether leading a project, mentoring fellow students, or participating in school events, Thomas's contributions are marked by a genuine desire to make a positive impact. Thomas also excels as an athlete, balancing his responsibilities on the Harold Winkler Middle School track team with his involvement in a community competitive swimming program. His commitment to these activities highlights his ability to manage time effectively while maintaining a high level of performance both academically and athletically. His respectful demeanor and unwavering dedication have left a lasting impression on both staff and students at Winkler Middle. Thomas's combination of hard work, initiative, and respect for others not only makes him a deserving recipient of the Impact Through Education Award, but also positions him as a promising leader with a very bright future ahead. Congratulations, Thomas. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Winkler Middle School.
Our next honoree from Winkler is Aubrey Stefaniac. Aubrey, please come forward with your family.
It is an honor to recognize Aubrey Stefaniac as an outstanding recipient of the Impact Through Education Award. Aubrey exemplifies the core values of perseverance, initiative, and respect that this award represents in everything she does. Aubrey's dedication and positive attitude shine brightly both in and out of the classroom. Her commitment to excellence is evidenced through her tireless work ethic and her proactive approach to her academic and athletic endeavors. Aubrey consistently goes above and beyond, demonstrating a level of hard work and initiative that sets her apart as a standout student. In addition to her impressive academic achievements, Aubrey excels as an athlete, balancing her commitments as a member of the Harold Winkler track team with her involvement in community softball. Aubrey does this all while ensuring her academic responsibilities are always fully met. Her ability to manage these demands while maintaining a high standard of performance reflects her remarkable diligence and resilience. Aubrey's respect for others is equally noteworthy. She interacts with both adults and peers with kindness and consideration, fostering a positive and inclusive environment for everyone around her. Her respectful demeanor and genuine care for others contribute to the supportive atmosphere at Winkler. Aubrey works incredibly hard to not only enhance her own educational experience, but also positively influence those around her. Aubrey's combination of diligence, initiative, and thoughtfulness not only makes her a deserving recipient of the Impact Through Education Award, but also emphasizes the remarkable potential she holds in her future. Congratulations, Aubrey. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Winkler Middle School.
Ms. Cavender, please come forward with your family.
It is a great privilege to celebrate Anna Cavender, Winkler's head custodian, as a recipient of the Impact Through Education Award. Anna is truly a cornerstone of our school's success, and her contributions go far beyond keeping the school clean and organized. She plays a vital role in ensuring the well-being of our entire school community. In her role, Anna leads with excellence, training and mentoring new custodial staff to meet the high standards she has set. Her leadership fosters a positive and efficient work environment, which benefits everyone at Winkler. Anna's collaboration with staff, students, and district personnel ensures that our school remains a safe, welcoming, and orderly environment where students can thrive. Her attention to detail and proactive approach help create a space where students feel happy and supported, allowing them to succeed both academically and personally. Beyond her custodial duties, Anna is also an accomplished author, writing children's books focused on safety, further showing her commitment to the well-being of young readers. Anna's dedication, leadership, and tireless efforts make her truly deserving of this award. Her dedication to educating and empowering children through her writing reflects her deep commitment to fostering a safer and more informed generation. Congratulations, Anna. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Winkler Middle School.
Mr. James, please come forward with your family.
It is an honor to recognize David James as a recipient of the Impact Through Education Award. David exemplifies the spirit of this award through his dedication to staff development and his unwavering commitment to student success. As seventh-grade-level chair and lead mentor, David provides invaluable support to his colleagues, ensuring that educators at all levels have the mentorship and resources they need to thrive. His leadership fosters a culture of continuous improvement and collaboration throughout Winkler Middle School. David's influence extends through the Wolfpack Workshops, a professional development series he leads, where staff members can collaborate and share best practices. This initiative strengthens not only professional growth, but also the sense of opportunity, community, within our school. In addition to his work with staff, David is deeply invested in building relationships with students, enriching their educational experience, and personal development. His dedication creates a ripple effect, positively impacting the entire Winkler community. Beyond Winkler, David serves on the Board of Directors for the North Carolina Association for Middle-Level Education, where he advocates for the middle-school concept and promotes professional development statewide. David's outstanding contributions make him truly deserving of this award. Congratulations, David. You're an Impact Through Education Award winner for Winkler Middle School.
Congratulations to all our recipients, and thanks again to our partners Equitable and the Cabarrus Chamber of Commerce for your partnership.
Thank you, Mr. Furr. We'll move to 7.02, our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month with Dr. Michael Williams. Good evening.
Good evening to you, Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Kupicki, and to our viewing audiences, both here and watching the livestream. It is my pleasure to recognize our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for September. We always want to begin by expressing our sincere thanks and gratitude to Mr. Tim Vaughn and Hillbush Ford for their tremendous generosity and continued sponsorship of this wonderful recognition program. Our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for September is Jessica Cash, a CTE technology teacher at C.C. Griffin STEM Middle School. At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Cash, her family, to join us here with Ms. Blessington here in the front. Ms. Cash, you received multiple nominations for this award from parents, students, and staff at C.C. Griffin STEM Middle School. Tonight, I want to share the nomination submitted by one of the parents about you. Jessica Cash is a remarkable educator who consistently goes above and beyond to acknowledge and nurture the unique genius of each of her students. Her dedication is evident in the way she creates an inclusive and inspiring learning environment, where every student feels valued and empowered to reach their full potential. One of the most impressive aspects of Jessica's work is her commitment to STEM education. She not only teaches robotics, but also provides her students with a wide range of STEM opportunities that extend beyond the regular curriculum. Her passion for these subjects is contagious, and she invests countless hours to ensure her students have the tools and encouragement they need to explore and excel in these fields. Jessica's efforts in promoting STEM education, particularly in robotics, have had a profound impact on her students. She has fostered a love for learning that extends beyond the classroom, helping her students build confidence, critical thinking skills, and a sense of curiosity that will serve them well throughout their lives. For her unwavering dedication, her ability to see and celebrate the potential in every student, and her exceptional contributions to STEM education, Jessica Cash truly deserves special recognition. Ms. Cash, thank you for the impact you have made to teach, engage, and inspire the students in your classroom. Congratulations on your selection as Cabarrus County Schools' Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month.
Dowers and Mr. Andy Campbell. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening to you, members of the Board, and Dr. Kupicki. If I could have Ms. Harrison, Brooke Harrison, and members of her family, or special guests, join us down front tonight, please. Madam Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Kupicki, this evening, we
She is licensed as a career development coordinator, an instructional management coordinator, a business education teacher, and also a CTE director, which is how she keeps me in line so well. She wears many hats in our department and wears all of them well, and I'm very proud of the work that she does for our department and for our school district. On July 17th in Winston-Salem at the CTE Summer Conference, Melanie was recognized as the North Carolina Curriculum and Instructional Management Coordinator of the Year. I'm very proud of you, and I'm proud I get to work with you every day. Congratulations.
Okay, that concludes our recognitions for tonight. We will go to 8.01, Approval of Minutes. Board members, I call for a motion to approve the open session minutes for August 5th and 12th as presented. Someone?
Second, but we have a quick discussion of the minutes format. Have you noticed that it's quite a bit different than it has been in the past? We've kind of gone back and forth from a lot of information in the minutes to just essentially what the actions are, and this one here seems to be more about what the actions are, and I'm okay with that. I just want to make sure that we're all aware that there's a format change in the minutes call, but I didn't hear why we were doing that.
Yes, so I know that I talked with our board clerk today. She added names of our speakers to these minutes, because I actually saw them before we had our meeting. So anything else that you're talking about, I'm not really sure.
You just have to compare. You'll see only a few of it, but there'll be less information. It's more organized in a way that you can see who voted for what, and I recognize that, but it doesn't go into more detail on what exactly was said by different people.
Any other discussion about that, board members? Mr. Eisenhower?
I was just going to say that Rob is correct. The formatting changed. I don't think it's a substantive change, but I think that it does read a little bit better, in my opinion. It follows along with the agenda, whereas the others was more of a general accounting. So I think the format works. It does look a little different, maybe has slightly different information, but I think more it's just because it's tracking along with the agenda itself. And I think Laurie's take was just to, you know, when she came on as board clerk, to kind of change that format, but that will be the format we use going forward unless any of the board members have an objection about it.
Any other discussion about that before we approve the minutes? Ms. Escobar?
I just want to say, I noticed the change, but I thought it was easy to follow, and it was accurate. So I think that's what's important, is that it's capturing accurately what's occurring.
Any other discussion? Okay, so I have a motion by, who made the motion? Ms. Escobar?
I second it.
Okay, and Mr. Walter seconded it?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor of approving the open session minutes for August 5th and 12th, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, those are approved. And thank you, Laurie, for your work on these. We appreciate that. Okay, board members, we'll move to 9.01. I would just like to say it's a breath of fresh air to have our recognitions back in our meetings. While people were talking and we were giving our staff these recognitions, I thought about a quote by Mahatma Gandhi, "That be the change you wish to see in the world," and I think that our staff, our teachers, people that come in front of us when we do these recognitions just deserve to be highlighted because they show what is great about Cabarrus County Schools. And I just wanted to mention that during my comments. We'll move to 9.02, our Superintendent Comments with Dr. John Kupicki.
Thank you, Mrs. Attcock. Just want to update our public on some safety awareness across our district. As you know, and as has been reported across the country, schools are facing an increase in online social media threats, many of which are intended as pranks or attention-seeking posts. However, no matter the intent, these threats are disruptive, frightening, and dangerous. They force schools and law enforcement to divert critical resources to investigate and respond, even when the threats turn out to be hoaxes. Cabarrus County Schools take every threat seriously. The safety of our students and staff is our number-one priority. From school administrators to local law enforcement, a team of trained professionals work tirelessly to ensure that every threat is properly investigated. This often leads to school disruptions, heightened anxiety among parents, students, and staff, and the strain of pulling essential resources away from other important tasks. Parents, please discuss this important issue with your child. Per North Carolina general statutes, any person who, by any means of communication, to any person or groups of persons threatens to commit an act of mass violence on educational property or any curricular or extracurricular activity sponsored by a school is guilty of a class-age felony and will be charged. The Say Something Online Anonymous tip line is the preferred method for reporting any concerns, ensuring that information is routed immediately to designated trained professionals who can take action immediately. By utilizing the Say Something Anonymous tip line, we empower each member of our community to take an active role in safeguarding our schools, and also assuring a prompt, quick response. This easily accessible tip line enables concerns, again, to be addressed promptly, fostering a culture of vigilance and care that keeps our students and staff protected. If you hear something concerning to your child's school, it's vital to share the information through the Say Something tip line, rather than on social media where it might not reach those who need to know. By directing your concerns to the right place, you help protect our students and ensure a prompt response. You may quickly access the tip line from your computer or mobile device by clicking the See Something/Say Something icon located near the top of our district and all-school website homepages. The link is also available on your Parent Square dashboard under Links. Thank you for your ongoing support in protecting our community. Let's stay vigilant and keep the lines of communication open to ensure that our students and staff remain safe. Attendance Awareness Month is this month in September, and we want to acknowledge that we are halfway through the month. I want to emphasize the critical role regular attention plays in our students' success. Every day in school is an opportunity to learn, grow, and thrive. When students attend school consistently, they are more likely to reach their full potential, academically and socially. So let's continue to work together, families, educators, and the entire community, to ensure our students have the support they need to attend school every day. Your presence in school matters. As of today, our attendance rate for the entire district in Cabarrus County is 95.4%. Our goal is 100%. We understand sometimes students need to miss school, but again, we encourage regular steady attendance as our best avenue to ensure success for our students. A reminder to everyone that our Futures Fair is taking place on October 17th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Our district will host the Future Fairs at the Cabarrus Arena. This event, in its third year, has something for everyone. Along with our annual Program Choice Fair, this event also features a career fair, military recruiters, and a college fair with more than 100 colleges on site. Whether you are looking to enroll in a college, enlist in a branch of the military, or become employed right after graduation, I encourage all students to attend and take advantage of the chance to engage with professionals and gather resources that will help shape their future success, and we look forward to seeing you there on October 17th. I would also like to close by, again, thanking our teachers and our administrators for the wonderful start we've had this school year. It's inspirational to walk through the schools and the classrooms and see the excellence that takes place every day in our school system. We have phenomenal teachers and excellent administrators that are caring for our children on a daily basis, and I'm just humbled and honored to work with them and to call myself a colleague of theirs. You all in this community should be very proud of your teachers and administrators because they certainly go above and beyond to make sure that our students receive a world-class education, and I'm grateful for their commitment and their dedication to our system. Thank you, Mrs. Attcock.
Thank you, Dr. Kupicki. We'll move to 9.03, our Board Attorney Comments. Mr. Eisenhower, do you have anything to share?
I do not.
Okay. We will move to 10.01, our Guest Speakers Address the Board. It is now time for public comment. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak, and an individual speaking for a group may be allowed up to five minutes at the discretion of the Board Chair to express interests and concerns related to the official business of the Board and the school district. The speakers will be called in the order in which we receive the request. A person may not be substituted for a speaker, nor may one speaker donate time to another speaker. If a speaker runs out of time, then the speaker may leave additional information with our board clerk. Statements reasonably perceived to be disruptive or threatening to the orderly operation of the meeting shall not be permitted. Any limitation on public comments shall be viewpoint-neutral. The Board Chair has the authority to rule a speaker out of order. If a speaker or attendee willfully interrupts, disturbs, or disrupts this meeting and refuses to leave after being asked by the Board Chair, then the speaker may be escorted out and could be arrested for trespassing or disrupting an official meeting. Board members will not respond to individuals who address the Board except to request clarification, points of clarification made by the presenter. As we have
More a motion to approve the open session minutes for August 5th and 12th as presented. Senator.
A second, but we have a quick discussion of the minutes format. Have you noticed that it's quite a bit different than it has been in the past? We've kind of gone back and forth from a lot of information in the minutes to just essentially what the actions are. And this one here seems to be more about what the actions are. And I'm okay with that. I just want to make sure that we're all aware that there's a format change in the minutes. But I didn't hear why we were doing that.
Yes, so I know that I talked with our board clerk today. She added names of our speakers to these minutes because I actually saw them before we had our meeting. So anything else that you're talking about, I'm not really sure.
You just have to compare. You'll see only every of it, but there'll be less information. It's more organized in a way that you can see who voted for what. And I recognize that, but it doesn't go into more detail on what exactly was said by different people.
Any other discussion about that, board members? Mr. Eisenhower?
I was just going to say that Rob is correct. The formatting changed. I don't think it's a substantive change, but I think that it does read a little bit better, in my opinion. It follows along with the agenda, whereas the others was more of a general accounting. So I think the format works. It does look a little different, maybe has slightly different information, but I think more it's just because it's tracking along with the agenda itself. And I think Lori's take was just to, you know, when she came on as board clerk to kind of change that format, but that will be the format we use going forward unless any of the board members have an objection about it.
Any other discussion about that before we approve the minutes? Ms. Escobar?
I just want to say I noticed the change, but I thought it was easy to follow and it was accurate. So I think that's what's important is that it's capturing accurately what's occurring.
Any other discussion? Okay, so I have a motion by, who made the motion? Ms. Escobar? Okay, and Mr. Walter seconded? Okay, all those in favor of approving the open session minutes for August 5th and 12th, say aye. Opposed? Okay, those are approved. And thank you Lori for your work on these. We appreciate that. Okay, board members will move to 9.01. I would just like to say it's a breath of fresh air to have our recognitions back in our meetings. While people were talking and we were giving our staff these recognitions, I thought about a quote by Mahatma Gandhi that's be the change you wish to see in the world. And I do think that our staff, our teachers, people that come in front of us when we do these recognitions just deserve to be highlighted because they show what is great about Cabarrus County schools. And I just wanted to mention that during my comments. We'll move to 9.02, our superintendent comments with Dr. John Kapicki.
Thank you, Mrs. Attcock. Just want to update our public on some safety awareness across our district. As you know, and as has been reported across the country, schools are facing an increase in online social media threats, many of which are intended as pranks or attention-seeking posts. However, no matter the intent, these threats are disruptive, frightening, and dangerous. They force schools and law enforcement to divert critical resources to investigate and respond even when the threats turn out to be hoaxes. Cabarrus County schools take every threat seriously. The safety of our students and staff is our number one priority. From school administrators to local law enforcement, a team of trained professionals work tirelessly to ensure that every threat is properly investigated. This often leads to school disruptions, heightened anxiety among parents, students and staff, and the strain of pulling essential resources away from other important tasks. Parents, please discuss this important issue with your child. Per North Carolina general statutes, any person who, by any means of communication, to any person or groups of persons threatens to commit an act of mass violence on educational property or any curricular or extracurricular activity sponsored by a school is guilty of a class-age felony and will be charged. The Say Something Online Anonymous tip line is the preferred method for reporting any concerns, ensuring that information is routed immediately to designated trained professionals who can take action immediately. By utilizing the Say Something Anonymous tip line, we empower each member of our community to take an active role in safeguarding our schools and also assuring a prompt, quick response. This easily accessible tip line enables concerns again to be addressed promptly, fostering a culture of vigilance and care that keeps our students and staff protected. If you hear something concerning to your child's school, it's vital to share the information through the Say Something tip line rather than on social media where it might not reach those who need to know. By directing your concerns to the right place, you help protect our students and ensure a prompt response. You may quickly access the tip line from your computer or mobile device by clicking the See Something/Say Something icon located near the top of our district and all-school website homepages. The link is also available on your Parent Square dashboard under Links. Thank you for your ongoing support in protecting our community. Let's stay vigilant and keep the lines of communication open to ensure that our students and staff remain safe. Attendance Awareness Month is this month in September. We want to acknowledge that we are halfway through the month. I want to emphasize the critical role regular attention plays in our students' success. Every day in school is an opportunity to learn, grow, and thrive. When students attend school consistently, they are more likely to reach their full potential academically and socially. So let's continue to work together, families, educators, and the entire community to ensure our students have the support they need to attend school every day. Your presence in school matters. As of today, our attendance rate for the entire District of Cabarrus County is 95.4%. Our goal is 100%. We understand sometimes students need to miss school, but again, we encourage regular steady attendance as our best avenue to ensure success for our students. A reminder to everyone that our Futures Fair is taking place on October 17th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Our district will host the Future Fairs at the Cabarrus Arena. This event, in its third year, has something for everyone. Along with our annual Program Choice Fair, this event also features a career fair, military recruiters, and a college fair with more than 100 colleges on site. Whether you are looking to enroll in a college, enlist in a branch of the military, or become employed right after graduation, I encourage all students to attend and take advantage of the chance to engage with professionals and gather resources that will help shape their future success. And we look forward to seeing you there on October the 17th. I would also like to close by again thanking our teachers and our administrators for the wonderful start we've had this school year. It's inspirational to walk through the schools and the classrooms and see the excellence that takes place every day in our school system. We have phenomenal teachers and excellent administrators that are caring for our children on a daily basis. And I'm just humbled and honored to work with them and to call myself a colleague of theirs. You all in this community should be very proud of your teachers and administrators because they certainly go above and beyond to make sure that our students receive a world-class education. And I'm grateful for their commitment and their dedication to our system. Thank you, Mrs. Attcock.
Thank you, Dr. Kapicki.
We'll move to 9.03, our board attorney comments. Mr. Eisenhower, do you have anything to share?
I do not.
Okay. We will move to 10.01, our guest speakers address the board. It is now time for public comment. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak, and an individual speaking for our group may be allowed up to five minutes at the discretion of the board chair to express interests and concerns related to the official business of the board and the school district. The speakers will be called in the order in which we receive the request. A person may not be substituted for a speaker, nor may one speaker donate time to another speaker. If a speaker runs out of time, then the speaker may leave additional information with our board clerk. Statements reasonably perceived to be disruptive or threatening to the orderly operation of the meeting shall not be permitted. Any limitation on public comments shall be viewpoint neutral. The board chair has the authority to rule a speaker out of order. If a speaker or attendee willfully interrupts, disturbs, or disrupts this meeting and refuses to leave after being asked by the board chair, then the speaker may be escorted out and could be arrested for trespassing or disrupting an official meeting. Board members will not respond to individuals who address the board except to request clarification, points of clarification made by the presenter. So we have one speaker tonight, Mr. Paul Wannish. Welcome, Mr. Wannish.
Good evening. Glad to be back today. Good evening, board members and Dr. Kapicki. Nat, today-
Mr. Wannish, your microphone is off. It's got a red light.
Is it on now? Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay. National trends that are shifting to lower emphasis on four-year colleges and college degrees. CNN reported a drop of 4% enrollment in the four-year programs and a 5% growth in vocational schools. North Carolina embarked on the shift in 2016 by establishing a CTE industry certification and credentials teacher bonus. This covers both credentials for skills as well as things like AP courses. In 2021 and 2022, there was over $30,000 additional that was available to the district. Much of this could go to the teachers who are preparing students to obtain technical certifications that they can add to their resumes and become a more marketable commodity. Since this same program also pays bonus for APs, the public needs to understand how this money was accounted for. Most of the people enrolled in courses that were for CTE did not end up getting certificates from some of the data that they got. Additionally, an advisory council on identifying the needs of the community should be formed. Charlotte Mecklenburg Board, PAT created a policy forming CTE advisory boards. Their recommendations can be directed to the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction to help buy us the certificates that are most valuable in our community. Because of the many, because many of these certificates are hands-on, they are a perfect candidate for clubs with bonuses acting as the base payment for teachers involved. Different topic, I've talked before about schools and soft targets. Dr. Kapicki just mentioned it again in our doctors in our district's campus. Recently, Matthew McConaughey started Greenlight and announced their charity to help write U.S. Department of Education grants to request hardening the K-12 campuses to prevent yet more incidents that we've been seeing far too often. There's 300 million currently available, not being used. I urge you to look into this as well as their associated program Stronger Connection to go after $1 billion in mental health, staff education, and support. On a different topic, data is important to everybody. It's power for the parents, and sometimes information is just missing, and that's really frustrating. The Edge Log Portal provides student transportation information or not. More than once, bus transmitters are unavailable, and it is impossible to know with arrival time, in this case for a long-haul hub bus where students are dropped off at unattended sites and students cannot walk to their student's home address. An example is shown in a distribution I made. Do GPSs break regularly? Is the driver turning the GPS off so driver's habits are not recorded? What post-reporting is being done on the geolocation and speed? Example would be speed versus speed limit. How is that information being reported to the public? Finally, the district was put on notice over a month ago. The district has not been in compliance with the North Carolina sanitary building codes. So I ask if the board would send their families to schools without toilets? Would you do that? And would you think that is really unsanitary? What if the school had three toilets and 1,000 students? Is that sanitary? When does it become sanitary? When the district complies with the same building codes every homeowner he has here that has to comply with. The North Carolina Senate passed a statute for the duties of the superintendent articulating 19 topics. The third task, make immediate provisions to remedy any unsafe or unsanitary condition existing in any of the schools. I'd expect a report to the board, remedies taken. I don't know if any of the report has been done or you've seen it. What are the district's plans to address? And I'd like to end with, thank you all for being on the board. It's been very nice having you here. I know there's elections coming up, and I wish you all the very best. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wannish.
I have a question for clarification. I saw that you sent us information today via email. Is that what you presented tonight?
So exactly what I read was sent to the board because I have lots of hot links in there. And there's no easy way, I can't give you a piece of paper, to get the hot links. So everything I've talked about is in that document with hot links to the sites that are references.
Outside of that, the sanitation concern that you mentioned, did you provide that to any of the school district staff? Is that specific to Cabarrus County schools, I'm guessing?
It's specific to Cabarrus schools.
Okay.
It was presented by the county building inspector.
Okay.
And notice was provided August 3rd. It went to several people in the construction and operations department.
Thanks for clarifying that for me. Have a good night.
Yep.
Okay, board members will move to 11.01, committee reports. Ms. Escobar?
Good evening. I just want to give an update on the interns. We saw some of them joined us last week. We have a lot more than that. They're required to attend at least one board of education meeting in person. And then outside of that, they meet with different staff to learn more about the school district. And I want to say thank you to Angela Fitzwater. She did our first meeting last week talking about exceptional children. And I want to thank all the other people that we have signed up so far for this semester. It will end on, our last meeting will be December 2nd, and we'll be going to Hickory Ridge to be with Caleb Snell, and he's going to show us what he does in the classroom. So I'm very excited. I want to say thank you to Sarah Reeves, Doug Carr, and Amy Louder. They're the other people that we have lined up. So they're very excited. It's a good group, and I'm excited to say it's about 20 students for this semester and next semester. So we'll have some others as well. And they're from a lot of our schools, so it's not all the same kids from the same school. So I'm excited about that, too.
Thank you, Ms. Escobar, for your work with that group. Mr. Walter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did have the privilege of attending the All County Band Preview this past weekend, and this is the event that was held at Mount Pleasant High School where we have every single band in Cabarrus County comes and does a preview of their performance during the marching band season. And I just wanted to say it was an outstanding event, just to see the excitement of the kids, our students, the talent, the sound, the work that our staff does was truly amazing. So if you did not get a chance to attend that, there are two band competitions here in Cabarrus County, one hosted by Hickory Ridge and another one hosted by Cox Mill. Those are open to the public, and a lot of our bands do attend those. I don't know if it's going to be all the bands, but they will be attending those. So look for information on that. And then secondly, I've been part of, you all approved this spring, my participation in the Hunt State Policy Fellows Program. And this is an opportunity where elected officials from around the state, you've got cities, you have counties, you've got towns and school boards, get together for three separate meetings on three separate educational topics. We had a meeting on early childhood, we had a meeting on K-12, and we had a meeting just last week on higher education. So essentially, the Hunt Institute facilitates, they bring in experts, they talk about the key issues and policy. We get an opportunity to facilitate discussions, learn about these issues, and we'll talk about best practices with other communities. So it's been a very wonderful time to essentially work with these other elected officials throughout the state and with our legislative groups. I'm happy if the board would like, for next month, I can certainly give you a presentation on all that we went through. And I think it would be helpful, and they gave me a nice paperwork, so completion. I got something out of it, but anyway, did want to mention that. And I guess lastly, just a congratulations to the colleague on the left for his new position. And then my colleague on the right for her birthday tomorrow.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Mr. Floyd?
As a member of the Safety Committee, I want to make a couple updates for folks. And one, you know, a lot of times, things happen and a lot of attention gets brought on to safety for a moment, and for whatever reason, it tends to be fleeting in the public, and then they move on unfortunately quicker and quicker every time. But what I want to reassure everybody is that we have an excellent Safety Committee. I've been a part of many task forces, especially involving security, tactical security, and this is a phenomenal one. It involves everybody, every stakeholder that you can imagine that we would need to have, and everybody's very active in this committee. They do a great job of collaborating, assessing, evaluating, and improving, no matter what's going on. We meet regularly, and whether anything's happening out there or not, we're working diligently. And we don't publicize a lot of that work because by nature of operational security, it's not a good idea to advertise all of our safety protocols. But I do want the public to understand that it is happening and it is diligent, and we have excellent people working on that. And then further, I'd like to reiterate what Dr. Kapicki said during his comments about utilizing the Say Something/Say Something line online. That is a vital tool. I think anybody in law enforcement will tell you that our tip lines are vital as well. These anonymous tip lines are extremely important, and please utilize that rather than social media. I don't think anything good has ever happened to social media comments, but especially when it comes to safety and security, we really want to make sure people are utilizing that. So I'd love to emphasize that and thank Dr. Kapicki for bringing it up. Thanks.
Any other committee reports, board members? Okay, we'll move to 11.02, our 2023-24 CCS School Performance Grades with Mr. Carl Sane. Welcome, Mr. Sane.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, Dr. Kapicki, members of the board, and the viewing audience at home. On the September 6th State Board of Education meeting, NCDPI shared school performance grade updates from the 2023-24 school year. This presentation will provide updates regarding Cabarrus County schools' performance and those metrics, specifically our school letter grades, achievement indicators, graduation rate, and growth status. Dashboards containing this data can be found at NCDPI's Accountability website. I want to start off by sharing that the data in this presentation represents much more than just a summary of data points. This presentation celebrates a multitude of academic accomplishments across the district for the 23-24 school year. And I want to commend our school administrators and teachers on the accomplishments to help so many students achieve success. I'm excited to be the one that gets to share some of this good news, but keep in mind that this represents the work of thousands of teachers and staff, and of course celebrates the efforts of more than 35,000 students that mastered grade-level content, achieved college career readiness, demonstrated progress on learning the English language, or completed their final graduation credits to walk across that stage. There's a slight delay. Curtis, if you wouldn't mind going to slide two. Mr. Cook, thank you. As has been presented yearly, the North Carolina Accountability Model is modeled on an 80-to-20 ratio, which means 80% of the score is based on achievement and 20% of the score is based on the growth that students make relative to projections. The achievement portion consists primarily of how students perform on state EOG and EOC assessments as well as English learner progress. High schools additionally include cohort graduation rate, math course rigor, and ACT work keys outcomes. For each of these metrics, what matters is whether the students made the proficiency, the passing grade, exited progress, or walked across the stage. The growth portion consists primarily of whether students exceeded expectations, whether they met expectations, or whether they did not meet expectations. This only constitutes 20% of the overall formula, but of course, it does better explain the impact of teaching and learning that occurred within that school. As an overview to school performance grades, I wanted to begin by sharing some perspective of how the letter grades play out across the state of North Carolina. As you can see from this visual, only a very few percentage of schools across the state are able to achieve an A rating. Think of it as, in a typical class, in a high school math class, your grade kind of starts at 100, and each time you miss an assignment, you work your way down. The way I describe this to people is it almost feels the opposite. It almost feels like as each student meets proficiency or walks across that stage, you're working your way upwards. So there is a very small percentage of schools that are able to achieve that A grade. Because 80% of the formula is geared towards achievement, and only roughly 55% of students are proficient on EOGs and EOCs, the grade tends to skew towards letter C and D grades. Only about 7% of schools across the state of North Carolina achieve an A rating this year, and then less than 30, about 30% of schools receive either an A or B rating. Then this slide shows how Cabarrus County schools compares. I'm excited to announce that 18 schools in our system were able to achieve either an A or a B letter grade. This was an increase year-over-year as we had 16 schools receive such a rating last year. As you can see, that the ratio of A schools this year is roughly triple the rate of the remainder of the state. On the other end of the spectrum, we had about half the number of DNF schools proportionally as the rest of the state. The next set of graph includes two additional comparisons. You can see the proportion of letter grades for charter schools and the letter grades for the large districts. We often compare outcomes in Cabarrus County schools to those of these other large districts as this set of 12 schools offers the closest comparison that we have to our school system. On this chart, you can see that charter schools largely resemble the state's proportions of A and B schools, slightly lagging behind the state's As and Bs. Cabarrus County schools far outpaces the typical charter school in our state. To the far right, you can see the outcomes in the largest 12 districts across the state. Once again, our ratio of A schools is roughly twice that of the other large districts, and our ratio of As and Bs is proportionally stronger. Of course, we also have fewer DNF schools than either the charter schools of the largest districts. In addition to providing a school performance grade score, NCDPI provides information related to student growth. This score represents the degree of confidence to which students exceeded growth, met growth, or did not meet projected growth. This chart shows the proportion of outcomes across the state of North Carolina. About 29% of schools across North Carolina exceed expected growth, 44% met expected growth, and 27% of schools across the state unfortunately did not meet expected growth last year. This next slide now shows how Cabarrus County schools fared compared to the state of North Carolina. I'm pleased to share that 15 of our schools across the district received a grade of exceeding growth and 18 more met growth. This represents over 80% of our schools across the district either meeting growth or exceeding growth. This is the same proportion as last year, so we remain constant in our percentage of schools exceeding or meeting growth. I'm also excited to share that every single Cabarrus County school's elementary school either met growth or exceeded growth, which is an accomplishment to be celebrated. The final comparison that I wanted to share is again to show how the proportion of charter and large district schools that either met or exceeded growth. Once again, charter schools lag slightly behind North Carolina public schools in exceeding growth, and you can see that we are very similar in our growth profile compared to the other large districts. Next, I want to move towards some of our achievement indicators. This first one is our graduation rate. This represents the percent of students that are deemed to be, walk across the stage within their four-year cohort. This shows our graduation rate over time. And we are excited to share that we increased by 1.7% of students graduating year-over-year from the 22-23 school year. This means that about 50 more students received a high school diploma than would have in the prior year. This slide also shows our rate in comparison to the largest districts. What a careful observer may notice is in this graph is that 1.7% increase that we showed was the largest increase from last year to this year out of the largest 12 districts. The next slide also represents the four-year graduation rate. This visual shows where we are at relative to historical data. It's important to note that during 2020, we had the highest graduation rate in recent memory, but that is partially due to the fact that seniors in that graduating class were given some leeway considering the disruption of the COVID pandemic. This most recent 1.7% increase would have otherwise been the largest increase in graduation rate in the history of Cabarrus County schools, in recent history of Cabarrus County schools. Next, I want to move towards our proficiency numbers. This represents the percent of- This represents the percent of students that are deemed to be on grade level, on end-of-grade and end-of-course assessments. This slide shows our proficiency over time, and we are excited to share another 0.7% increase year over year. Our overall trend mirrors that of much of the rest of the state of North Carolina, and we typically perform seven to nine points above the state average. As a point of comparison, again, to the largest 12 districts, you can see that our proficiency would rank us third amongst our peers. Our students demonstrated a healthy increase and maintained our ranking near the top of this chart. The next comparison is to our surrounding districts. So you can see, this is the southwest region, which is all of the regions between Cleveland County to the west and Stanley County to the east. Our overall proficiency ranks second in the region, and you can see that some of the local districts have either stagnated growth or have regressed in proficiency while we continue our steady increase in proficiency, which is the third consecutive year of increased The next two slides represent our proficiency and college career-ready ranks with, out of the 117 North Carolina districts. So this slide shows our proficiency ranks. To be proficient, a student needs to score at least a Level III, IV, or V on the North Carolina EOG or EOC. You can see our proficiency percentage and our rank in 22-23 for each assessment, and then you can see the proficiency and rank in 23-24 to the right. I'm pleased to share that our proficiency increased across every assessment except for Math III, and in Math III, the state average actually decreased in proficiency as well. You can also see that in many places, our ranking increased or had minimal negative impact. I'd like to call special attention to reading in 3rd through 8th grade proficiency. You may recall that our most significant professional development of the last three years occurred with early literacy by implementing the letters program. And it's exciting to see that there may exist a correlation with our ranking in the state and that associated professional development. The next slide summarizes a similar dataset, except this now shows our percentage of students that are deemed college and career-ready. This represents students now scoring a higher mark on those same assessments. So to be college and career-ready, you've got to score either a Level IV or V on that EOG or EOC. You'll probably notice that our state ranking on college career readiness is actually even higher than our proficiency ranking, as well as in the top 10 of most tested subjects in elementary and middle school. And then we saw a collective increase in high school rankings as well. The final way that I would like to look at our proficiency is by tracking student cohorts. Oftentimes, we look at proficiency year over year, but in comparing 4th graders from last year to 4th graders the year before, you're actually comparing two different student populations. So this chart is actually going to compare student cohorts across time and what their journey has looked like regarding proficiency over time. On this chart, the yellow boxes represent last year's 8th graders. You can see that they were in 3rd grade in the 2018-19 school year, and they were 60.2% proficient. The next year was the COVID pandemic, at which point they did not take an assessment. And then when they returned from the pandemic the following year, they were at 49.8% proficient. As you follow their trajectory over time, you see that we are gradually moving back to the proficiency that the cohort began with in 2018-19. I should caution that this represents the entire grade level of students in each of those years, and the students that we have in 2023-24 is not the exact same student group that we had six years before. We've lost some students since then, we've gained some students since then, overall it was a net increase. The purpose of this graph is to highlight a single grade level so that you can understand how to read the following chart, where I'm going to provide additional layers on top. So this chart now represents multiple grade levels. Hopefully, you can follow the color coding of each of those grade levels. You can see that each cohort of students is trending towards 60% proficient across reading EOGs. And I would like you to focus on the 2021 school year immediately after the pandemic. Each grade level has rebounded in a spectacular way to regain proficiency after experiencing This next chart shows math outcomes. You will notice a similar trend with some positive outliers showing that elementary math is actually trending even closer to 65% proficient at this juncture. And again, I'd like to highlight where we were immediately after the pandemic compared to where we are now. The final slides I wanted to share pertain to outcomes of some specific student subgroups. So this slide references the graduation rate of several student subgroups. I'd like to point out that the graduation rate of economically disadvantaged students is the highest in recent memory. I'd like to point out that the graduation rate of students with disabilities has increased for the second consecutive year and is the second highest in recent memory, and that the graduation rate of English learners did dip relative to the prior year, but it still demonstrates an overall positive trend relative to the prior five years. In closing, I thought I'd share a few other points of pride. This slide highlights some positive outcomes for groups of special student populations that are designated by the state of North Carolina. Any rankings referenced on this slide and in the next slide are relative in nature to the same rankings across the state. So when you see academically-intellectually gifted and that they are first in EOG or EOC proficiency, that means compared against other academically-intellectually gifted groups, our group ranked first. With English learners, for instance, our group of English learners ranked 17th in the state in exiting English learner status compared to the other English learners across the state on that same metric. So economically disadvantaged students increased their work keys proficiency and increased their overall high school proficiency by 3.4%. Students with disabilities increased their proficiency across all EOGs in reading by 1.4% overall, math by half a percent overall, and science by 1.4% overall. Academically-intellectually gifted were first overall in EOG and EOC proficiency, first in graduation rate, and first in work keys. And I've already referenced one data point for English learners, but they were also ranked 15th overall in college career readiness on the EOG, 15th in math ranking, and 11th in overall reading ranking. We had a few other points of pride that I wanted to call out relating to student subgroups that are, again, North Carolina designations. So, and again, each of these subgroup rankings are relative to the same subgroup across the rest of the state. I'll pause for a minute to allow you to read those. Our Asian subgroup across the state is second overall across the state of North Carolina in EOG college and career readiness, third in overall EOG proficiency, third in work keys, and second in college career readiness across all EOGs and EOCs as compared to other Asian subgroups. Our Black subgroup in Cabarrus County Schools was sixth in the state in overall EOG proficiency, seventh in college and career readiness, and third in overall reading college and career readiness as compared to other Black subgroups across the state. Our Hispanic subgroup had a tremendous work keys achievement, increased from 42% to 52% achievement. And our White subgroup is ranked 15th overall in EOG proficiency and college and career readiness, and 13th across all EOG proficiency as compared to other White subgroups. I wanted to call out a few points of pride when I disaggregated the specific numbers, and I thought those were helpful to share. Overall, I want to, again, commend our teachers and our administrators for an unbelievable amount of work in the 23-24 school year. There were a lot of data digs where they were disaggregating data. Our students took benchmark tests to help them see, to track where they were at with proficiency. But most importantly, teachers taught, students learned, administrators provided feedback. There was a lot of really positives coming out of last year that I wanted to share. Does anybody have any questions?
Any discussion, board members? Mr. Floyd?
First of all, thank you for the presentation. You remain the most electrifying man in Cabarrus County Schools. Very exciting every time you present to us, we appreciate that. And again, congratulations to everybody in the district, especially those who overperformed, basically. I hope somebody from the districts reached out to everybody, and if not, I'm sure they will. I want to point out, and this isn't in the presentation, but I think it merits pointing out to, for a certain group, and again, everybody did incredible, and I don't mean to sing anybody out, but ever since I came to the board, all I've heard from anybody was Wes Cabarrus, Wes Cabarrus, Wes Cabarrus, fix Wes, what's going on at Wes, Wes Cabarrus. And that, you know, we don't have individual school data, but they deserve a special shout out in my mind. They crushed it. And I'm not big on data defining what goes on in a school, but the reason I pointed out is because I think that their data was out of this world as a result of a culture that was built, and we talk about that a lot here, and so I want to make sure we point that out to the public, that culture yields results, not the other way around. They did absolutely great, and I got a chance to go over there and celebrate with them, which I appreciated. They've got great kids, they've got great staff, and they've got a really great future over there, and they're heading in a good direction. And I just think they deserve a positive shout out with their data that came out there. Specifically, Dr. Snyder, who's onward, she's got a lot going on, we're praying for her, but I just want to make sure she's receiving the praise she deserves for building that culture that's yielded that data that so many other schools are also emulating and creating in their hallways. So special shout out to Wes Cabarrus as an unbiased, I know Ms. Sandage has a very vested interest in that school, and will tell you the same thing from an outsider end. Congratulations to them and to everybody, and thank you for the culture that we've built here.
Ms. Escobar?
So thank you. It is exciting to listen to this and not, and I'm very proud, and I'm very proud of all of our students because not everybody does well on testing. So I'm sure they've learned even more than what this captures, but I'm so impressed by the staff and our teachers who are just pouring into our kids every day, and I'm just very thankful to hear this information. I also think that there's room for improvement, and I know that that's what we'll be focused on this year. Some questions that I had just looking at the slides, and I don't need all the information right now, but I was just curious. On slide 18, when you look at math, the math equivalent, and I just know this as a parent, you know, they, and I think in middle school it's called Delta Math, and then in elementary they had something else, but it's like a computer program that like goes with them and challenges them at the rate that they're at. Is that part of why we're seeing, you know, we didn't have letters? So what, do you know what it is that's keeping us on track and seeing this drastic improvement?
I would hesitate to point out one specific thing that's going on unless, Sarah would like to speak to that, Ms. Reeves. In, you know, in general, one thing that I was going to highlight, given the opportunity, is we have had very specific focuses for the last few years. Elementary focused on letters, amongst other things. Last year, our high schools focused on graduation rate, and you saw a gigantic jump in graduation rate. So wherever we tend to mobilize and focus, we've seen some really good outcomes. To your point, yes, there are some places where we will focus our efforts for the next school year. We have actually identified some of those. You'll see some of that presentation in upcoming months, you know, when we share school improvement plan goals. But we were mobilizing our forces in June at summer leadership. Those of you that attended know exactly what our focus was, and it played out exactly in the data. But yes, we had some really positive accomplishments. To Mr. Floyd's point, it was really hard for me to try to stay at 30,000 foot and not celebrate some of our schools that did some really amazing things at the individual school level.
And also, I'm very confident saying this, we, it's our teachers. It's our teachers in the classroom, in front of the kids every day that are producing these results, and they are fantastic. Again, I would always caution people when I look at this stat, it's one piece of the puzzle, right? It's an important piece of the puzzle. But the encouraging thing of this stat is that you see constant and consistent improvement across the board, pretty much everywhere, and our theme is always continuous improvement. To your point on the math, that the math is one of our key strategic goals this year to improve upon, especially our Math 1, and Mrs. Reeves has worked hard with her folks and Tracy Hayes and the curriculum instruction folks to focus on that. You will see a lot of that when we talk about the school improvement reports that are coming up over the next couple of months, but that is an area of focus for us. And to Mr. Sane's point, what we focus, it's like anything, what you talk about and what you measure gets done as long as you're doing it, and we are. But the bottom line is, I sit here and I say it repeatedly, you all know that we have extraordinary teachers doing great work in our classrooms, meeting our kids' needs where they're at, and we're just continuing to hammer home, let's just keep getting better, keep getting better. Our math goal this year, what we've done to Carl Sane, who was another extraordinary human being in terms of leadership and the things that he can do, and I'm not underselling that, anybody that has worked with Mr. Sane would tell you, he's incredible. We looked at what would make us the number one math district in the state. We took the percentages across the state and wondered who was the highest. And then I talked with Sarah and Dr. Bowers, and I gave Carl the information. Carl came back and gave every school the percentage they'd have to hit to be number one. So whether it be 55%, 80%, whatever that number is, they know, and that's kind of where we're at. So if they hit those goals, the hope is we come back next year and say to you, you know, with a big smile on their face, we're number one in the state. So all that being said, I will put our teachers up against anybody, I'll put this district up against anything anywhere. So it's a focus, and we continue to, I share that little story with you to say, we're focused, and we are looking at how do we get better and how do we continue to ascend. And it starts with your teachers and folks like Carl and Sarah and Tracy and others that are working hard to do that.
Well, and I'm saying, I noticed an increase, and there is improvement, and again, you know, the pandemic really set us back, and I don't think we ever really talk about that. I mean, it is pretty remarkable how fast Cabarrus County specifically, not North Carolina, but Cabarrus County bounced back pretty impressively. And so that goes to my next question, which is economically disadvantaged school. We see the schools that are at the bottom, what's the proportion of economically disadvantaged students that are at those schools? I'm guessing that there's a correlation between that, and that's stuff we can't overcome in some ways. I mean, we can address teaching, but those kids are coming into school with a lot of needs not being met at all different levels. So I would just be curious to see that, and I know we're going to get the plans for them, so we'll focus on that, too. And then lastly, that bragging slide, what is work keys?
Work keys is an assessment that students that have a CTE concentrator take, paid for by the state of North Carolina. So if a student is in high school, for instance, and they are taking career technical education courses in something like carpentry, for instance, or perhaps aviation at Wes Cabarrus, if they take multiple courses in that one strand, then they are provided the work keys assessment. The work keys is really a test of job readiness skills.
Okay, great.
And so that, that specific assessment measures, it's not specific to aviation, and it's not specific to carpentry, it's more about your, how you would work, you know, how, what skills you have associated with the workplace. So what the state of North Carolina provides as one of these key indicators is what percentage of students passed either the ACT, which is college readiness, or the work keys, which is also an ACT exam. But by passing one of those two, it indicates that you're either ready for a college or you're ready for a career.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
So if I can, you've opened up a can of worms, I have to, I have to, I have to. This is a bragging point, and I'm so impressed with our teachers and our administrators on this. And this is some of the data that we look at to fine tune it. But to give you an idea of when you talk about the economically disadvantaged kids, how focused our principals are, just to highlight some schools, WM Urban has a free reduced population of 67%, exceeded growth by, the index by 8.02 points. What that means is there are eight deviations from the mean to the right of the, that's extraordinary. When you look at Charles Boger, 48% free reduced, they're about three points on the growth index. Coltrane Webb, 51%, almost 2.2 points to the right on the growth index. When I take that even further, I look at Rocky River, 71%, and they met growth, and they're doing incredible work. And I'm just jumping on a couple of them. When I look at, I'm going to jump, Concord High School, 70% of their kids, they exceeded growth by 2.34%. And these are just some of our schools that are doing this. So when I say to you that, when people talk about, you know, we talk about all kids, we mean all kids. We're focused on all kids because all kids can learn and all kids can have great, great careers here academically, athletically, whatever it is they chase after, we mean all kids. And our principals and our teachers are proving that, you know, they can do the work and they will get our kids to achieve at a high level. And what that means is they're setting high expectations, and our kids are reaching them. So the data just shows how good our teachers and administrators are, so I'm very, very thankful to them.
Ms. Sandage?
Thank you for the presentation. Every time you come up here and present this data to us, I am more and more amazed by what happens in public education. I understand, like I'm sure many of us on the dais here and many of us out there, that public education is uber-important to- public education is uber-important to who we are. It's the fiber of our community and our county. So, I just appreciate being able to see this on paper. What I want to ask is, we talk about this 80/20 and how that really does not benefit and show where we are, but we keep showing that we're growing. So, how do we continue to argue that point, is my question?
Sure. So, there, think of it as two separate metrics, and I just, again, want to understand that you're familiar with this, but just to make sure that everyone's educated in the viewing audience, the, the 80% achievement is, to Ms. Escobar's point, largely the reason for the correlation between free and reduced or high-poverty areas having lower scores. That is really just a metric of, did the students pass the thing? Did they pass the test? Did they walk across the stage? And it's a high bar to be proficient on a test. If you've ever seen the fifth grade math test, you know, the, the TV show, Are You Smarter Than a Fifth Grader? That fifth grade test is not easy, right? It's for, for a large majority of people, is the argument I'm going to make. So, students that are in high-poverty situations largely come in to schools, I don't want to make a generalization. Students in high-poverty situations tend to not do as well on the achievement components, is the way I'll put it. So, the growth measurement is really the better indicator of how much learning happened and what was the experience like for students in this setting, in this classroom, in this school, across this district. So, growth is just the better indicator to show actually what happened within the classroom walls, whereas achievement has a strong correlation with what's happening outside of those classroom walls.
And I totally get it, but what I'm saying is, we continue to excel, even though the system is flawed, in my opinion, right? And so, with that, I'm saying, we're continuing to do more with less. We're also continuing to advocate for more, but, and I'm just thinking in a politician mind, right? How do we solidify that this is a continued need if we keep pushing the needle forward, is, is what I'm asking.
Sure. So, I would point us towards this slide behind Union and Wake County. And so, I think we have every opportunity, and I'm going a little bit off script here, but I think we have every opportunity to catch Union and Wake County. To the point that I mentioned earlier, what we focus on, we tend to do well on. So, last year, we focused on graduation rate with high schools. We focused on D schools and F schools, as far as what types of support we provided. Our average D school raised their school performance grade by over three points this past year. We had one F school, and their school performance grade almost increased by 10 points. So, we were able to mobilize forces towards those schools that needed some additional support. The problem is, as you guys are familiar, we are dead last in the state in per pupil spending. So, the, the ways that we can mobilize those supports are somewhat limited, right? We're not able to provide those same supports to every one of our schools, to every one of our subgroups, and to every one of our student populations. So, I did some quick math. If I'm not mistaken, Union County's per pupil spending, if we had the equivalent per pupil spending, we would have had 10 and a half million more dollars. Wake County, if we would have had the same equivalent per pupil spending, we would have had an additional $31 million. And I'm not saying it's all about money, but it would have been a good opportunity for us to mobilize some additional resources to schools that were in the C range, for instance.
All right. My last, I guess, point question, I don't know what I want to call it here, but last year, I remember asking specifically about private schools, especially with all of the funding that is continuing to be poured into that institution. We should be comparing to ourselves to not just charter schools and not just the rest of the state, but private schools. Is there a reason that we don't have that data?
That's right. That's because they're not asked to take these assessments.
Oh, okay. Can you say that one more time for us? They're getting public dollars, but what?
Private schools are not beholden to the same accountability system.
Thank you.
Just real quick to, I just want to acknowledge Gordon Palmer's efforts on our graduation rate. He and I had a conversation about that last year, and through his work with our principals, and our principals deserve a lot of credit and, and for all the work they did on raising our graduation rate. I anticipate that to continue to become higher and higher as we move forward, but Gordon Palmer did a great job with that and setting that up and having that as a constant conversation with our principals, and our principals follow through on that is the reason why that, that increased. So, I really, I'm very grateful to our principals, and commend them on their great work as well.
Mr. Walter.
Thank you. I appreciate the presentation, too. There's a lot of data in there to, to go through. How can the public view our data? Is that through the DPI system, or how?
Yes, sir. And I apologize that I didn't add a link. On the NCDPI accountability website, there is a downloadable spreadsheet, but there's actually also three data dashboards that have been created. Those three data dashboards include one that is on proficiency scores and one that's on graduation rate, and I believe the third one is on the overall letter grade. Each, each dashboard is able, you can click on it and see statewide results, you can click and see regional results, or you can click and see individual district and then school results.
And it goes all the way down to the subgroup, subgroups as well.
Yes, sir. Every day.
It's a nice tool for the public to see if they want to really see how their, their school is doing. Appreciate your comments on Union and Wake, because again, they, they tend to consistently be above us, and one of my questions was, well, what are they doing so well that maybe we can model to, to get our kids up there as well? You pointed to some of that. My other question had to be that our board made a difficult decision a year or two ago about changing our school calendar, and one of those reasons was for the opportunity for we'd see a result in the test scores. Do we see something in there, in the data that's showing us that, that we made the right call that way? Is it making a difference?
That's a great question. I can look into that. I have not disaggregated to that extent yet. One thing that I would point us towards, I know I was asked to put together some data around, multiple years ago, in anticipation of that decision. And part of what we looked at was fall high school proficiency and college career readiness compared to spring, just because the fall assessment is the one that's taken right there before Christmas break. So, that's a great question. You can see that from last year to this year, we did see a, a general increase in high school. So, our biology, our biology proficiency increased by over 2%. Our English 2 proficiency increased by over 1%. Our math 1 proficiency increased by over 2%. And then, of course, math 3, as, as I mentioned earlier, decreased, but we actually, the entire state decreased, we decreased by less than the state did. And then you can see three of those four subjects increased in rank. So, I have not broken it down by fall versus spring. Some of that is tricky to do because the composition of fall high school courses is not the same composition as spring high school courses. So, I was a high school math 1 teacher for a decade. My fall math 1 class tended to be those advanced high school math 1 students that were ready for math 1. My spring tended to be students that needed some additional prerequisite work first. So, I could do some analysis on that. Or Peters. So, I could do some analysis, but it would be, there would be.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting it's easy to dig through this data, because you've got, you probably go to those other school systems that are also on the, on the early calendar and see how, how they've, they've done as well.
That's right.
But it is worth looking into.
Sure.
And then I second the work from our staff and our principals on, on this, it's outstanding. You hate to point, point out one particular school over another, but there is a program that, that seems to be very good, that really has a high percentage of high-poverty and minority students, and they bucked, they bucked the trend. Every one of our early colleges is an A school, is, is that correct?
That's exactly right. Our, our early colleges are an exemplary model. We opened one early college, and, and within two years, they're, they're an A school. And for that matter, they were an A school last year. So, our three early colleges really lead the way. They, their proficiency is off the charts, their growth is always commendable, so our early college.
So, it shows me that those groups can do, can do, can very well do, do that and reach, reach that. And I guess, just the last part, I know we all focus on the numbers, but, you know, kids are not all about a test score. Some kids don't test, test well, and I think we need to recognize that as well. Thank you.
Mr. Treadaway.
One of the things I, I did want to point out is that, and I think this is a point of pride. If you look at math 1 proficiency in high school, for example, one of the easy ways to do that is not allow as many eighth graders in middle school take math 1. Your stronger math students are taking it in high school. And I am just proud to say that you don't see that in Cabarrus County. We push kids. We want them to excel as fast as they can make it. And so, it would be easy to play some games if you wanted to, is what I'm saying. But we are kid-focused, or that's been my experience for a long time, and I'm proud of that. Sometimes pushing kids can hurt us in these numbers a little bit, but it's what's right for the kid.
Our growth score in math 1 is the highest of our four tested EOC subjects.
Ms. Lindsay.
So, thank you for the presentation, as always. I did have a question. So, we brought up the, the per pupil spending. How, how is that calculated? I mean, if we're last, how is that calculated? Who decides that? Where does that information, like, where does that number come from?
Sure. There's a state report that adds up all types of funding. So, it's got federal funding, it's got state-level funding, it's got local funding. You can actually, I can send you the link. There is, it's, it's a published, public website. You can sort by each of those indicators, and so, across North Carolina, it will, you can sort, for instance, to see where we rank on local funding. And I think we're somewhere in the middle of the, of the state in local funding. But we receive less than average state or federal funding, for instance, and then that puts us overall last in the state in per pupil spending. I do not have the URL on any of this.
And that's fine. I was going to ask you, is there a reason why we receive less? Like, or is that just?
I, I cannot get into the details of how the state chooses to allot their money. I'm sure they have a formula that is based on a variety of factors, and we tend to land somewhere around the same neighborhood as Union County, for instance, in state funding. So, Union County receives $10,863 total dollars per student. Cabarrus County receives $10,713 per student. But we receive $2,580 local per student, and they receive $2,880 local. So, they receive $300 per student extra. $300 per student times 35,000 students is over $10 million of local funds. And again, we had fantastic outcomes. I'm not, you know, I'm not trying to, but the question from Ms. Sandage was, what could we have done else, or how do we communicate this need? And we mobilized forces around certain issues. And this year, we plan to mobilize forces to the point of this slide. You can see that eighth grade math, eighth grade math fell short. So, we recognized that in June, and we made a plan to ask all middle schools to mobilize around eighth grade math. Well, that doesn't help the students on this slide. They've already moved to high school. So, to Dr. Kipicki's point, we mobilized forces around high school math 1 as well. So, that way, we've addressed what happened last year, and we've addressed these students moving forward. Again, the, the point of the funding component is, we have to pick and choose what we fund, and I'm sorry, what we focus on, and being last in per pupil spending is a factor in that.
Ms. Escobar.
Thank you. So, I know that we've been talking to NCDPI about changing the formula. Is there any indication of if that's going to change? I recognize that they have leadership, and that's going to change in November. Are we waiting for that to see what, what the possibilities are?
For the last, for at least two years, if not three, there has been a, a model pushed and presented by NCDPI that would focus on a variety of factors. I do not have those notes on me at this moment. Essentially, it would include some additional indicators, so things like, you know.
Extracurriculars, attendance, things of that nature. But yeah, it's, it remains up in the air whether or not that's going to go through or not.
Okay. So, there's no timeframe on that or the possibility of that?
That's right.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Mr. Floyd.
I'd just like to circle us back to the point that Ms. Sandage and Ms. Lindsay, I believe, were making, that we, you look at this, and then it makes you wonder, what could we do for our children if we were fully funded? What could we do for our children if we were fully funded? So, like, everybody on this board has, has really done a good job of pushing that point, but also just praising the, the teachers and the staff for what they accomplished. But let's just take a minute and imagine, what could we accomplish for our children if we were fully funded? And I just want to think about that.
Anything else?
Yeah, just one last point. I know Mr. Sane noted it early in his presentation about our elementary schools mean they're exceeding growth in every, in every school. That last year was 21 schools, this year 20, and that just shows the leadership abilities of Dr. Parker, leading her crew. She does yeoman's work overseeing those 20 schools, so very grateful for her leadership and the great work that has resulted in that, so thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Board members, we'll move to 11.03, the transportation update with Dr. Jonathan Bowers and Mr. Art Whitaker. Welcome, gentlemen.
Good evening once again, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Kipicki. Mr. Floyd, I'll apologize in advance, I may not be as electrifying as Mr. Sane. So, no, sir. So, again, it's, it's difficult following those footsteps and to be up afterwards. But certainly, I want to bring before the board tonight an opportunity to review kind of our beginning-of-year updates as it relates to transportation. Transportation's a hot topic throughout the year. It's no secret about that, and certainly at the beginning of the year, it is on, on the minds of us all. And so, I appreciate Mr. Whitaker being here with me this evening, and I certainly want to publicly recognize the work that he and his team do daily. There's a lot that takes place behind the scenes, and there are a lot of, a lot of hours that are put in, and thankless hours sometimes. But I can tell you one thing, this gentleman to my right, he and his team, there's not ever been a time I have not reached out to which they have not dropped what they're doing, to be able to research, investigate, and make sure that we are doing the best to be able to serve our constituents. It is daunting, and it is challenging, and we recognize that. But Mr. Whitaker doesn't shy away from that. Matter of fact, he steps up and he does it with a sense of professionalism and pride that many would not be able to perform. And so, I am appreciative of his efforts, and we know we have a long way to go. We know we have work to do to be better, and that's what we strive for every single day. So, it certainly, it does not bring us any joy to have any stakeholder reach out on any front to be able to share a concern that they may have, or something that might have not just gone well, because we know that right now, they, they are the tip of the spear in terms of getting our children home and to school safely each and every day. And they don't stop until they can certainly achieve that. And so, I just wanted to publicly be able to say that and share that, and I am thankful for his service and his work, as well as the members of his team. We are blessed to have that team in place, and I have worked in several school systems in my career, and this is the finest, from a transportational standpoint, from an overall school system standpoint. Again, we have ways to improve, and we'll continue to do that, and we appreciate the board's efforts and support. And again, you've always been supportive in that role. Tonight, however, we do want to give you just some historical data and walk you through some context, because it's important to have context with where we are and how we operate, and certainly some of the services that we provide, and looking at this from the backdrop of the county as a whole. So, we'll provide that historical lens. Do want to tout some of the accomplishments that Mr. Whitaker and his team have been able to achieve. They are certainly noteworthy, and we should be proud of those. And then we're going to address challenges. What do we continue to face? How do we want to, what do we have as ideas moving forward? How will we mitigate some of these things? And certainly, our efforts to continually improve. So, this first table that you have here, this gives you a snapshot of last year as compared to this year. I do apologize, these have Day 15 numbers for enrollment before us. Takes a little while to be able to pull some of these measures down. So, again, these have changed, but it gives you a baseline as to where we started the year this year as compared to last year. And the first thing I'll bring to your attention are ridership. We are looking right now, if you look, in that first row across the board, it gives you our ridership from both an AM and a PM standpoint. That number is the number of students that we have that are riding our buses every single day. And the number in parentheses gives you what percent of our total enrollment does that constitute? You can see there that between last year and this year, in the morning ridership alone, we grew by 3%. That's a one-year jump. We have over 26, excuse me, 25,000 riders now on our AM routes. For the PM portion, you can see we have over 26,000 student riders, and I can guarantee you, that number has only gone up since this presentation was prepared. And that indicates a two-percentage-point jump over the previous year. So, again, business is booming, as we like to say. And there is a demand out there. And folks are certainly taking advantage of that which we can provide. If you look at the number of those yellow bus drivers, the next row, and this is important to understand. That's the number of full-time yellow bus drivers that we have employed assigned to a route. Last year, on day 15, we had 206. This year, on day 15, we have 192. So, the transportation team is doing yeoman's work, again, to be able to cover a gap, a significant gap. And again, we certainly don't use that as an excuse. It is just a fact. And it certainly is something that we want to make sure we share, and folks are aware of. Because it's not as if we have the, it's not as if the labor exists, and we're able to just exhaust that now. There is a deficiency with that. And we're having to pull off some unique measures to be able to account for that. I want you to look at the number of routes, though. Our number of routes have not changed. A route, if you'll recall, is an AM/PM series of runs that is assigned to a driver. Our drivers right now, for the most part, those 192 full-time drivers that we have assigned to a route, they're covering a minimum of three runs in the morning, three runs in the afternoon. And that constitutes one route. We are now seeing an increase in terms of their demands and their responsibilities, to which almost every single one of them is running a double in some regards, in some capacity, at some point throughout the day. We have some drivers that are running two doubles, some in the morning, some in the afternoons. So, again, some of the efforts that our team has to work with to be able to utilize the existing labor force. Nonetheless, same number of routes, we haven't seen a decrease there. I want you to look at the number of runs. Or, we are actually having fewer runs this year on those routes. Which, again, some of that is due to the fewer drivers. So, we have to maximize what we have from a, from a personnel standpoint to get the most out of what we're able to offer. And that is ensuring that, for the most part, when we can, continuing to adjust and tweak, we're running those buses as full as we can, so that we can have the greatest capacity in each and every day. Our number of stops, our number of stops has increased. We're serving more students now, ergo, more stops along the way. And so, that's roughly 380 more stops this year than we had last year. The number of double runs, we've actually decreased those somewhat. Again, we're still heavily dependent upon that. And we'll continue to try to mitigate that as much as possible. But you can see it's somewhat comparable to where we were last year. And this is noteworthy as well. We're using fewer gallons of gas per day. Some of that is due to the fact that we have fewer buses on the road. So, that certainly has a factor in it as well. But there's another interesting trend that's playing out that'll be another data point I'll share with you later.
Madam Chair, Dr. Kupicki, members of the board, thank you for the kind words Dr. Bowers had for our team. It is truly a team effort. I don't stand here alone and tell you that we can do it by ourselves. We cannot. So, we rely on everybody in the transportation department. Everybody from our mechanics, all the way down to our bus drivers, all the way down to our supervisors. It is truly a team effort. The graph that you see before you right now is a detailed representation of the data that Dr. Bowers just gave you over four years. So, as you can see, ridership continues to outpace previous years. From the '21 to '22 school year, you see an increase of 11%. And then, in the '21-'22 PM route, you see an increase at 10%. I'd like to put that into context a little bit for, for you. If you took those two bottom numbers and you added those together, we are transporting the entire population of Mooresville daily. It's over 50,000, 50,000 people, okay? So, that just kind of shows you to what extent that is. It is an undaunting task. But, once again, we all step forward and we all do it. Once again, with the, this graphic actually shows the bus stops over the last four years. So, it gives you some kind of context of where we are over the last four years. With the increase in ridership, you see an increase in our stops. From '21-'22, you see 8,068. And then, the '24-'25, you see 8948, which represents approximately a 10% increase over the four years. That is consistent with our ridership increase as well. The goal here would be to try to reduce those number of stops and go to a more of a, a more of a corner stop or a neighborhood stop that would help us with our time element or our time performance. Less stops, less time used. McKinney-Vento request. You have heard me mention this multiple times before. Our McKinney-Vento program is our federal program that we transport our homeless children in. That student population is a very cyclical. It comes and it goes, and we see peaks and valleys. But, if you'll see the amount of requests that we have been able, these are requests that have been processed by my office from the '22-'23 school year. At the end of the school year, we filled 612 requests for transportation. The '23-'24 school year, at the end of that school year, we filled 794 requests. And the last, the last bar graph there, to date, and we have only been in school for a very short time, we have already filled 287 requests for transportation. That number is anticipated to eclipse all the numbers prior to that. I'm sorry to say that. But, I have a few other slide, I have a few other ideas that, how we're going to handle that. But, as you can see, we have already filled 287 requests, and we've only been in school for a month. So, that, that's a telltelling sign of what lies ahead of us.
I echo Mr. Whitaker's sentiments on that as well. Given that this is through day 15, if that same trend were to continue with our McKinney-Vento enrollment, we would certainly eclipse 900, close to 1,000 requests, requests by the end of the school year. Just again, gives us a sense of changing demographics, and certainly, a population of students to whom we're obviously going to make sure we continue to serve. But some of the challenges there is that the McKinney-Vento routing is a little bit different than normal transportation routing as well. This is interesting, as I alluded to earlier, with the fewer gallons of gas that are being utilized each and every day. We're also seeing fewer miles. Now, some of that is due to less equipment on the road. But also, it's due, once again, to some of the efforts of Mr. Whitaker and his team. They have had a tremendous amount of work, not only routing us more strategically to ensure that we're doing, getting the greatest yield for what we have to offer. But also, again, there have been some changes with some of our boundaries. And we looked at it initially, and we saw that there would be some cleaner areas, more direct lines of service, especially with feeder patterns within our school. So, when we look through this, one of the contributing elements, and we can say with confidence, is that realignment did give us some cleaner boundaries and some tighter geographic areas that has helped in some regards with our transportation team. That doesn't always come out, but we do see it play out here with the fewer miles that we're running each and every day. So, I tell, I want to tout some of the accomplishments. Because, again, these are noteworthy. EdgeLog, we've had hiccups. We, there's no doubt about that. And these are things to which we grow through as well. But we do have over 36,000 right now users on EdgeLog. That, we are pleased with. That is a high usage rate for our families. And so, we're excited about that. Most of the things that folks are encountering, when they reach out or they just contact our transportation department, they're easily troubleshooting. Somewhere, sometimes, they're just a software update that took place, and folks weren't aware of that. Sometimes, it's just a simple reinstall, as you would with any app. Over time, there will inherently be glitches. We'd like that not to be the case. But sometimes, it's just a simple reinstallation, and it triggers. The other thing we noticed, too, that families started sharing some concerns is that it, in their opinions, the app was not working. We just started our statement earlier tonight about GPS. I don't, those numbers are not accurate to the numbers we know to be true. Mr. Whitaker and his team have actually checked the GPS's on every single one of our buses. Asked them to do that as recently as last week. Because one of the things we want to be mindful of and conscious of is reporting data, which we can use, and certainly, being able to identify our buses that are on the road. We had identified some things that weren't giving us good data points that could be contributing factors. One of the things that happened was the fact that they changed the radius on EdgeLog from a larger geographic zone, or GeoNet around an area, to a .5, half a mile. So, if I'm a user, and I'm a family member, and I'm using the app to monitor my bus, sometimes, if you live in a densely populated or a very highly populated area, there may be several times in which that bus comes in and out of your zone or your area around your home, and it'll ping on the app. So, it gives you a kind of a false arrival to a degree. And certainly, there are ways to be able to control that. And Mr. Whitaker and his team have really been helpful in helping families navigate through that as well. So, that was one of the changes at the outset that we started to get some feedback on. The other thing we found, too, with some of the GPS points, is that there is a piece to this that if we don't, what we're getting sometimes is that on school grounds, we have to be able, when the bus stops, make sure that we are doing the stop arm and the deployment every single time and opening the doors. It has to be a significant enough, pause enough time such that the GPS will capture it. All right, so, there's an element there to which we found. And that's been a corrective measure that's been put in place. And then, the last thing, truth be told, cellular service. We have areas of our county that is just sometimes the cellular service is not as good as it would be in others. And so, we do have some areas which we could see a bit of an outage in place. When that happens, the GPS just doesn't deliver because it operates off of cellphone service. So, those things there, that's a little bit more up beyond our control. But we have identified some measures in-house to be able to capture that. Ultimately, though, we are pleased with what EdgeLog has been able to deliver us. It is giving us a way to be able to look at transportation data in a manner we have not had before. So, using that to inform where we go forward and how we can continue to enhance our efforts will be critical. We shared with you last spring a report before the board that was a technical inefficiency report. Folks from EdgeLog had high praise for the way in which our team was operating and with the effectiveness and the efficiency. Now, what we have to do is continue to leverage some of the metrics so that we can be able to use data as our friend and kind of that works smarter, not harder adage, if you will. The electric buses, really pleased with Mr. Whitaker and his team's efforts for embracing the electric bus, you know, kind of approach. We have one that we're currently at as an active member of our fleet right now. We're anticipating another one arriving later this fall, in the next couple of weeks. And we've actually had the electric vehicle charging station in-house that has been received. I think you may have, some news that have been shared recently. And we're expecting four more additional buses to the fleet by the '26-'27 school year. If that holds true, that would then give us six, which we would then be the leader in North Carolina from an electric bus or electric vehicle standpoint. So, puts us really on the cutting edge in terms of use and the implementation of vehicles. And then, NCDPI inspection scores. This sometimes gets, sometimes overlooked. We had a mechanic who was recognized last month, if you'll recall, as one of our Everyday Hero Award recipients. Last spring, NCDPI came through and formed our annual inspection and audit. And we were able to improve our score by 12 points over the previous year. In the '23-'24, excuse me, '22-'23 score, school year, the district itself received a score of 34.2. That's good, all right? Lower is better here. And it's kind of like a game of golf on this end, all right? So, they went from, we went from 34.2 down to 22.2 this past year. We led the region in terms of the lowest score, all right, as awarded by DPI. The auditor-inspector had high praise for the team. And that's the lowest mark we have had in place since the 2016-2017 school year. So, in seven years, Mr. Whitaker and his team, while operating a fleet, which we are actually putting as many buses on the road and have run them many miles as we can, and being able to have some of the challenges they have, still maintaining a high degree of service and making safety the number-one overall approach for our students every single day. So, those things, they don't come out in everyday findings. And our parents don't know this, and we wouldn't expect them to. But it's important for us to know it. Because, again, not only are they tasked with getting the buses and getting the children to school, but it's also the maintenance, the operation, and making sure you do it with fidelity and making sure there's a high standard of excellence in place. And I can say that with confidence for our transportation team.
Of course, we have our challenges. And I'm going to talk to you a little bit about some of the steps that we've taken to kind of mitigate some of those challenges. Number one, right off the bat, staffing for our bus drivers. Driver shortage continues to be a challenge to promote CCS transportation and to gain employees. We are constantly utilizing our social media platforms, are holding job fairs, as well as our signage throughout our county. We have even contacted a local media group, Beasley Media Group, to help us with getting the word out that we need bus drivers. They have taken a really a high-tech approach to that. We are, we are ahead in streaming, streaming commercials. We are, we are doing geo-fencing around other CDL holders facilities. We are, we are actually doing radio spots. So, we're taking a complete different look at this and trying to promote ourselves from a professional standpoint. And the data still is coming in. But we're hopeful that, that that right there is going to, going to glean some kind of results from it. As you can see, our hub busing, for those that are our school choice parents, that we have changed the model that we've used for our hub busing this year. If we have a small hub run or a small hub population there, and it doesn't require, if it's less than 14, we have decided to free up the big yellow school bus and use it on a, on a more prestigious run. And we put a, we put a yellow, excuse me, a white minibus on that. So, we're actually utilizing our white fleet to actually transport small numbers of hub buses. And that's working extremely well. And our early college model, we now have three early colleges. I'm sure that everyone is aware of that. We have the RCC, we have the, we have the tech, and then, we have the health sciences. So, there is three schools that we have to try to figure out how to get transportation to county-wide program. This is a county-wide program. So, what we've decided to do is pick up certain areas within the county, all on the same bus. We come to one centralized location, then we disseminate the children onto the bus that actually goes to that particular school. So, we've had that model in place now for about two years, and it seems to be working well.
And one of the things that I'll point out here is those last two items, the hub busing and then that one with the early college. What some of those measures allow us to do with those innovative approaches is to put more buses and drivers with CDLs back into the fleet. So, with some shortages even in-house, Mr. Whitaker has restructured some of his team to be able to say, how can we maximize the expertise we have in our CDL usage to ensure that we're putting it back to our larger service and come up with some unique ways in which we can handle some of these one-offs? So, again, that has helped lessen some of the impact. It hasn't certainly got us where we need to be. And we'll continue to exhaust those measures. And we'll continue to find ways to pursue unique and innovative approaches to operate now in an environment which we know that there will be some shortages moving ahead. But we're going to adapt with what we have so that we can meet those challenges as well. So, we'll pause there for any questions that you may have. Oh, I'm sorry, there's one more side. Thank you, Mr. Floyd. I'm glad you got.
In regards to the McKinney-Vento, I alluded to that a little earlier. To help with utilizing the equipment and efficiency, as Dr. Bowers indicated, we have assigned McKinney-Vento students to buses, minivans, and vans themselves, or minibuses and vans. So, we, we've been extremely cognizant of the fact that we do have a larger growing population there. And we're going to have to be a lot smarter on how we transport them. So, we're starting to put them, if you're in boundary, we put you on a bus. If you're out of boundary, we put you on a minibus. If you're out of the county, we put you on a van. So, that's been the method that we've, we've used, and it's extremely efficient. So, I'm very pleased with that. Updates on our DMV trainers. So, CCS currently has a change in DMV personnel. We have one full-time trainer, one part-time trainer. And we have a new liaison person that helps with our area. We have been, it has been a very fluid relationship with the DMV in this area. But I am confident that, given some recent personnel changes within our district, we have a supervisor that calls and checks on us every single solitary week. Have a great working relationship there. One of the DMV agents had to go out for a little while, which left a particular load on one particular one. And then, they brought back a retiree, much as we do in the education field. They brought back a part-time. So, that's been, that's yielded us some kind of results. But we are looking to get fully, fully 100% with our DMV individuals. And lastly, our material management, as we're entering hurricane season, as you can tell, we're, we are in, we are in some inclement weather. But we always try to make sure that we have those commodities that we go out and we, we buy every single solitary day. We make sure we have good vendors on hand, our fuel, our spare parts, our tires. All of that is a commodity that we go out and we spend money on every day. So, we make sure we have plenty of it, and we make sure we have a great relationship with our vendors. And with that, we will go to questions.
Ms. Escobar.
Thank you so much. I will just say that my daughter is on one of those minibuses, and they've been great. Really efficient and on time, and, and that, that's been wonderful. So, thank you. I know the system's really big. I will also say that I met a bus driver on, on Saturday who's been dedicated to our school district for such a long time. And they're wonderful, really great bus drivers. And I would just add for, I'm happy to hear that you're doing marketing and being creative. That's really important because it's competitive out there. And I would just add that the quality of life, like, you could drive a truck, or you could drive a bus. And you drive a bus full of kids who are wonderful, and like, they have great relationships. I mean, I know that we've had great relationships with our bus drivers in our neighborhood. So, I would just add that to the pitch of why you would want to be a bus driver versus driving a truck and also staying close to home. You know, it's nice to work in your, your area. Questions. So, with those minibuses and then with the vans with McKinney-Vento, I'm guessing you don't need a CDL, or do you?
No, you do not. You, that is one of the great, one of the great things that gives us that flexibility with the minibus. It's less than 14 passengers.
Yep.
And that doesn't require a CDL. So, it's below 14 passengers, and it's below a weight requirement. Above that, you will need a CDL.
Perfect. And then, the other question I just wanted to add, when you're looking at reducing stops, I understand that you got to be creative. I would just say that, you know, some of these developments, like in where I live, there are so many kids that if you have just one stop at the front, especially with elementary, you create a traffic issue because parents are still driving. you create a traffic issue because parents are still driving their kid to the front of the development. So you really, anyway, I just, I recognize that we need to do what we can do, but you have inadvertent traffic patterns that happen in neighborhoods because it's not just the bus, it's all the kids on the corner, plus all their parents and their cars blocking traffic and things like that. So when you're balancing where you decide how many stops to cut, just keep that in mind because I know for me, just driving to work after dropping my kid off, I see them all over the place, and it just makes me nervous with the little kids.
I understand.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Lindsay.
Art, I just want you to know that I continue to be amazed at what the Transportation Department does. I know that every, every year, at the beginning of the year, it's extremely difficult. But I also know that it doesn't matter what time of year it is. You are constantly having to work on adding more kids to the routes, changing the routes if need be. And I really don't know how y'all do it. I mean, it's, it's really amazing when you look at the numbers, truly. So thank you for all of the hard work that y'all do. I did want to ask a question regarding, have we seen a decrease that so far this year? I know it's early, but one of the, one of the concerns that I hear regularly on buses is, is if there's a discipline issue. And so I just didn't know where we were with that so far this year. Are we, are we good? Discipline is down? How are we?
I haven't received any discipline calls lately. So, I mean, so I would say that not because I haven't received them, but it is still early in the year. But, I mean, it is a positive trend that we, we're still knowing who the students are, we're still adding students. So that's a little too early in the game right now to, to give you any kind of definitive answer on that. But as, if I see any kind of trends or anything like that, as far as discipline's concerned, I'll be more than glad to report that to Dr. Bowers and Dr. Kopecky.
Completely fair. But again, thank you for what y'all do.
Sure.
Mr. Treadaway.
I know as a principal, sometimes teachers were having a bad day, and they'd come in and they'd say, talk about how hard their job is, and I was quick to remind them that substitute teacher had a harder job today. And their job is not as hard as the bus driver brought the kids here and took them home. To make that correlation, though, their class size has gone up. They have more kids, and sometimes all it takes is one, right? I mean, I think we know that one. We know what that kid looks like. But also, double runs is like you're the sub-driver. Because these may not, in other words, if you're having to do a double run for someone who's out, you're like the substitute teacher, but your classroom's behind you while you're driving and focusing on the road. So they have an incredibly hard job. And one misnomer I've heard a lot is, and I'm glad you addressed that, Dr. Bowers, is I think a lot of folks are thinking that realignment led to some of this stuff. And, I mean, that's a fair, I mean, from, the in-number is one at home. And, but I'm glad you made that clear, that actually our distances have been reduced is what we expected. But our, our drivers are amazing. They're just amazing. The other thing I'll say, too, about three-tiered bussing, in the past, we used to have drivers that really enjoyed driving elementary, others enjoyed high school. They're driving everybody. It's just amazing. And it's just amazing what they do.
Ms. Sandage.
Thanks for the presentation. Thanks for fielding all the questions and concerns that I sent to you via email very quickly. I totally appreciate that. I just want to see if I can, or if we can debunk some of the stuff that I am hearing, if possible. So first, I want to state that this is a system, and we, the transportation is just one part of a very large system. So I get that when issues happen in one part of the system, it definitely affects other parts as well. So you don't bear all of these issues alone, you and your team, Mr. Whitaker. And I just wanted to let you know how much I understand that.
Thank you.
So the, Mr. Treadway's point was about the redistricting. Do we have any data that just pretty much debunks that redistricting doesn't have any bearing on what's happening with transportation? And I ask that, one, because I'm getting questions about it, two, because I've gotten more concerns this year about transportation than I have since I've been on this board, which hadn't been that long. But you hear what I'm saying.
Yes, ma'am, of course. So I'll speak to the first part of that, and that's the data point. And then I'll turn it over to Mr. Whitaker for things that might be seen from the field that I might not be aware of from his drivers. Again, we go back to the models driven daily. That right there is our most telling indicator. We can use that, we can pull a point in time as compared to a point in time, and that is a day 15 versus day 15 synopsis. And again, to Mr. Treadway's point as well, while we may not have the same amount of equipment on the road, we're still running the same routes. And those routes are still intact. We've been able to consolidate some of our runs internally to be able to capitalize and maximize the number of students we put on a bus, so we're running them fuller. That is a contributing element to our delays. The fact that we now have 14 fewer drivers on day 15 than we did at this point last year, that's a contributing element to the delays and some of the challenges we're experiencing. From a mileage standpoint, 361 square miles across Cabarrus County, saw that we're driving right now 1,200 almost fewer miles daily than we did at this point last year. So the, the reason I draw attention to that is to say, we're, we're providing the same blanket coverage. We're just doing it now of a tighter, more concise, more contrite manner, if you will, within a geographic area. And that is a direct result of being able to have smaller boundaries when, not all feeder patterns, because not all experience changed, but in those that did.
And adding to what Dr. Bowers, I don't see any direct evidence of that. I can tell you that the lack of bus drivers does yield to the fact of exactly what Dr. Bowers, we are driving more. So we're not comparing apples to apples, and when you look at that per se, because we're losing that ability to, to do apples to apples because we're, we're doing it with fewer people. So I don't see any direct evidence of that right now.
The other one is, I'm being told that there are like crammed buses, so there may be like three students to a seat, and that's not safe. So can you tell me what that looks like?
Sure. So our buses, as you, as you indicated, they're, they're driving three routes, or they're driving three, that high school, elementary, and middle. So if you look at what the capacity, the rated capacity, and that rated capacity is through the Department of Public Instruction, and it is listed on the bulkhead of every school bus there is. So as long as you don't go over that rated capacity, you are, you are within the limits. So in a, in a high school, standard passenger bus, it's 44. We can haul 44 students in a high school configuration. We can, we can take 66 in all, most typical, all of our buses. We do have some 72s out there that we have put on some of our, our more heavier routes. They come in a 72 configuration, and we've been buying the 72 configuration. But the majority of those buses are rated at 66. And at the middle school level, on the bulkhead, it's rated for 54. So as long as we don't go over that, and how we look at those configurations, if we're three to a seat, then what we're going to try to do is, we're going to try to see if the bus driver can rearrange the seating arrangements of that. Sometimes if you have three smaller children or three children that maybe can fit on that seat correctly, that's where we want to put that. But we do know that we have some larger individuals or larger students that might be the big football players, or might be, they might not be able to sit three to a seat. So we, we start looking for the configuration of where we can sit these students. But I can tell you that we watch those configurations, and we watch those load capacities every single solitary day. And if there's an overloaded capacity or at the capacity, we don't put any more students on that bus. So we take that very seriously because if something would happen, and we were to get in an accident, and we would be over capacity, that would be, that would be a liability on us, and we, we would not do that. So.
Thank you for explaining that. I will tell you, I did also get the concern that Ms. Escobar raised as well, that there are neighborhoods where there are tons of kids getting on, and they pose a safety risk because a lot of people are in those traffic patterns that probably shouldn't be. So I'm not sure if that's been addressed, or you guys have looked at those areas, but...
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm done.
Yeah, I do know the one area that was, early on in the year, was the Christianberry neighborhood that I went up to and actually talked to parents in the Christianberry neighborhood. And the first day or two, there was one assigned stop where there were a lot of kids and was packed. By the second or third day, Art and his team had it all rectified and fixed. And I was actually there, and the bus made two or three different stops, and I talked with parents, and they were pleased with the results of Art's work. I also received an email or two from a couple of parents up there, responded to them, and they also had indicated that they were thankful for the work that Art and his team did. So I believe that was resolved very quickly.
Awesome. So this is another example of us doing more with less. So I just want to commend you all for that and just say thank you. I also want to ask if there are any other districts that we've identified that they're also doing more with less, and they've identified things that maybe we could implement here? Maybe I'll have looked at that already, but is there somewhere that's got it right?
So we actually have, we have what's called a job alike, and that's where individuals with obvious common responsibilities within school systems in a particular region come together on a monthly basis. Our next job alike meeting will be taking place at UNCC. Mr. Whitaker will be accompanying me because we've invited Kevin Harrison, who is the Section Chief of Transportation at the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, to be a speaker. And with that, we'll have other transportation directors from the region, and you sort of read my mind on this, is to sit down in the room and just steal secrets from each other, all right? And so not too many, we won't give all of ours away. But, you know, nonetheless, is that to learn from each other in this because we know that this is now the, the new norm, if you will. And again, as we said, doing more with less, I think you said it so eloquently, that'll become the mantra and the flavor of the day for us. So we'll, we'll learn from them, and we anticipate on doing that, and hopefully get some ideas for what 24, 25, or 25, 26 looks like. And point of clarification, Ms. Sandage, I want to give you an exact figure. So we went back and did this, we're actually running 1,576 fewer miles daily than we did at this point last year. So that's an exact figure, just to tell you that.
Well, thank you. And that was the reason for my question. Because at some point, this is what we got. We got to figure it out.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Walter.
Yeah, thanks for your presentation. It's always educational for me. I mean, it stands out, 26,000 kids, 75% of our 80 population are riding the bus. One clarification, we use the word McKinney Vento. People don't always know what that means. So if we want to, can you explain what McKinney Vento is real quick?
Dr. Roth is our resident expert, but if I goof it up, you can.
I mean, essentially, kids that are homeless.
I'll lead to the transportation.
Yeah, I was looking for the homeless, homeless word, or...
Very simply, McKinney Vento is the law that guides us on how we transport our homeless students in the district and what the legal requirements and guidelines are that we must follow to make sure that we're transporting our homeless students.
So the requirement is that they can stay at their same school even if they're no longer in the district.
That's correct.
District or the, or the area. And we have to provide transportation. So we could be going to Charlotte.
Every day.
We could be going to other places.
Every day. We go to Lexington, we go to Gaston.
Stable environment for that, for that particular child. And it's expensive, and we don't always get reimbursed for that.
No, we don't. Nope, it's an unfunded mandate typically.
I throw that out there, too. That's, that's a concern. Are we, drivers are getting overtime when they run these extra runs, or how does that work?
Absolutely. Anything over, because they are hourly paid employees, if we, if they pick up extra hours or they go over, we're always, we're always authorizing that to, we ask that you please get authorization before you do that. So it has to be authorization from my office before you work over 40 hours. But that is, that, that's, that's the law, and that's what we...
So are they volunteering for these extra runs, or are we assigning these extra runs?
No, we're, we're asking if we have somebody that falls out, or we have a sickness, or somebody can't finish, we're asking, would you, would you finish that run for them? And we always have the greatest employees in the world that are willing to step up and take on that additional responsibility.
So they do the double, that's the double runs, or that's the extra runs?
Yep, that's the double run.
Okay. I mean, my hats off to every one of our bus drivers.
Absolutely.
They got to focus on the safety of our kids, driving, driving, getting to school back and forth, plus dealing with all, like we were talking about, the discipline issues. I mean, it is rewarding, but it's also difficult. It's not, not the easiest job, and it's not for everybody. What else did I have? I had a question on this electric bus. I know that was an experiment. Does, is it, so does it make a full day, every six runs, or what does it do?
I, I'll be honest with you, that we had a few kinks when we first got it, and we started working those kinks out. But I can tell you, as of the very first day of school, it has operated every day, on schedule, on time. I think we've, we basically know what's expected of it. It does, it's three runs in the morning, it comes in, the driver is wonderful. A big shout out to Mr. Kelsey. He has taken on that responsibility of being our, our pilot, bus driver for that. Mr. Kelsey plugs it up at around 9:15, and when he comes to get in his bus around 1:30, 1:45, it is fully charged and ready to go for the next, for the next run.
Well, I guess good news.
We're very pleased about, we're very pleased about the efficiency of it. Yes, sir.
I had a question here. Ms. Sandage has brought up, as the board, we're getting more complaints than we had in the past. Are you tracking those complaints? Are you seeing an increase, or how, how are we handling, how do we do that? How do we track our...
So what we would share this is that there's a website that we have that has been created to which individuals can reach out to. Mr. Whitaker shares that through the Friday Five that's published through communications, and it's also on our transportation website. So if someone had a concern or a question, it's an email, and they respond to those. As far as the tracking, that becomes our mechanism to which we look. I can't give you right now specifically to say we have more, we have less, there's an influx. We haven't run that data set yet. So right now, I would just be speculating, and I would prefer not to do that. So we can look, but we have not tracked.
Good, thank you for that.
Typically, typically, those kind of responses that are coming in on the transportation concern line or app, I can't, I can't make the app work, or can you tell me if, if we're scheduled for transportation? So when you say concern, it's, it's a concern, but it's about different things. We're being, it's a general mailbox, and multiple people watch it, and it's, it's different concerns, is from the app to general transportation questions. Will bus 514 be my permanent bus from now on? So as far as complaints or concern, I, I don't see anything that's out of the ordinary, given the fact of first month in school.
I mean, you've always been tremendously responsive to...
Yes, sir.
The things that come through our, our desk, and you handled it personally a lot of the time.
I appreciate it.
If you've heard from you being on vacation and handling something when you weren't supposed to.
We have a good team.
So yes, I certainly appreciate that. Just a few more here. So I, I think what it comes down to, for me, you know, we have 27, 26, almost 27,000 kids that ride the bus, 75%. So we can either treat it with the employees, and hey, we have a bunch of, we need more bus drivers, or we can try the other end and try to get more people to drive their kids to school. So we can either look at that as well, maybe a combination of both. But technically, we're not required, it states as you, there's a limit, right, a mileage limit, and we, we're well inside of that mileage limit, is that correct?
Yes, sir. It's a one and a half mile radius within, around the school itself.
And we still provide services to people. Well, well within that, so...
Yes, we do not delineate between any distance right now.
Right, so, but we could. I was just saying, if it gets to a point, some difficult decisions may have to be made. But thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Mr. Floyd.
Thank you. And I think, first of all, everybody on the board has asked great questions, and I just appreciated that. The first thing I want to say is, I appreciate you being forward-facing and the fact that, yes, the, the first couple of days of school, especially the first day, is always a mess. And if we're being honest, this was probably the worst one that I remember. But that's for everybody, and we're all facing it. Day two, however, was monumentally better. And every complaint that came to me, just like Mr. Walter said, forward and on, I heard immediate feedback from somebody that this has been fixed. That doesn't mean every complaint got fixed. I'm just saying, everybody that properly communicated got a, got a response. So I want to encourage everybody to make sure that they're doing that. The bottom line is, we are down 40 drivers. Creativity cannot solve that problem. Creativity can hide that problem and make it look better in public, but it doesn't solve the problem. We are down 40 drivers. Money solves that problem. We don't have the money. We could get the money. We don't have the money. We could get the money. We want the money. We asked for the money. It's available. It goes to other places a lot of times. So I, I just want to make sure everybody pays attention to that. If you're affected by this, then perhaps you're affected by where the funding goes from the state of North Carolina when it comes to education, particularly public education. That might be something you might think outside your own bubble and own box to think about as, as we head into November, alright? Something I also want to point out and just remind us, including myself, it was, it's rough. It's been rough. We have a ways to go, but it is so much better. But at the end of every day, every child has arrived where they're supposed to be safely and accounted for. And that is not a small thing. Logistics is an incredibly complicated business. Airports do this for a living, for billions of dollars of profit with highly paid employees, 365 days a year. What was your last trip to the airport like, I ask you? So let's keep that in mind as we deal with our bus drivers and our transportation system in this county and give not just grace, praise, admiration. I mean, they are outperforming the highest standard that there is. And it's just, we can't say enough about that, okay? Not, not excusing or belittling the issues. I can, I know what it's like to have, you know, to plan your workday around and figure out what to do with your child. They're 10 minutes early, they're 10 minutes late. We don't know completely valid concerns. And we want to continue to hear those because as we hear them, they get addressed. So I, I know we're beating that into the ground. I also want to make sure that we all play a part in making this better. I'm hearing stories of parents getting on buses and yelling at bus drivers. I think that's something that anybody that does that, in five years, they would look back at themselves and be a little embarrassed that they did it and ashamed of themselves. But they're in that moment and it is such a tense moment for them. So I want us all to remember that moment before we get into it, let's not get there, okay? That does not help our problem with human capital here. We're not going to solve that problem by screaming and by yelling and by belittling. We're going to solve that problem by working together, okay? I'm glad Mr. Walter brought this up. This is a hard decision we need to think about. We have been at minus 40 since as long as I remember looking at these numbers. We have tried every creative solution. Everybody that's ever run for the board has touted a bunch of creative solutions. We are at minus 40 still today. We'll be at minus 40 tomorrow, okay? If we're being realistic, okay? There may be some hard decisions that have to be made and we may need to start looking at exclusion zones and not just blanket exclusion zones, but where there are safety areas and things like that to consider. We may need to be seeing some of that data here pretty soon, I'm afraid. Because if we are at a breaking point, that's a big, big deal we need to be ready to overcome, alright? I do want to give a shout out to Representative Crutchfield who came to the legislative day and heard our concerns about certifying CDL drivers and, and, and put together task force that reached out to the commissioner of the DMV. Hopefully that will get better soon. I also want to praise you. I believe I see in the report that we are now hiring people that are waiting for their license to be bus monitors. That has to be helpful. Ms. Lindsay brought up a great point about discipline. Bus discipline is something I've been hearing about forever. I have not heard anything about, and I'm not saying it's not a problem. I don't know about you. I'm not hearing anything about it right now. I'm, I'm hearing about a couple of parents coming on the bus. I hadn't heard anything about students and, and not having our drivers' backs, which, which really, really matters. So hopefully some of that stuff can continue to work in our favor. Another point that we, we need to make sure people understand, I'm glad Mr. Walter asked what McKinney vinto is. When you pull up those numbers, at this point in the year, we're an eighth of the way through the year. I mean, if you, if you annualize that, we're 2,000, you know, McKinney vinto kids. I know that's not how it works. They identify slowly throughout the year because they don't often self-identify. They have to be found and they have to be identified and that is a challenge. We don't even know how big a challenge we have right now that we're dealing with. And I hope that people understand that and appreciate that as well. A question I have is about route planning. How, how do we do route planning? Do we have like a, a software, like a logistics company? Do we do manual route planning? I know there's a lot that has to happen on the fly too because somebody's out and we've got to double run. Can you talk to us a little bit about that so people understand what goes into that?
The state of North Carolina provides us routing software. It's called the TIMS, Transportation Information Management System. And it is authorized by the state of North Carolina. It's an EdgeLog product. That's why our EdgeLog routing software, excuse me, our EdgeLog parent app works so well because it's the same company that, that North Carolina says we will use in our routing. The reason that they use that as far as a single source vendor is because all your state reports are pulled out of EdgeLog TIMS, which is the Transportation Information Management System. Those are the reporting metrics that we report to the state of North Carolina that go through the linear regression models and all of the magic box of funding formula that comes out of. They will not take any other data other than it comes out of TIMS. TIMS is the certified software program that we must use. That, that software program, even though that it, it has some, it has some AI functions in it, that AI function is, is not recommended because it, we know as well as some districts have relied on that AI function and it's turned out to be a disaster. So we, we employ the best routers in the world, in my opinion. I will stack them up against anybody that, that has any, any routing capability. But they're able to plot the kids, they're able to put the, put the runs together or the routes together and they're able to do that looking at a computer screen. And then they can see whether or not that's a right-hand turn, left-hand turn, right-hand side stop, gotta walk across the street. So there's a lot of human factors in that and our staff are the ones that actually do that. And they, they hand route each and every, each and every run for each and every school. So that's the way that's.
Mr. Floyd just added that. I think it's, it's a blend. It's a hybrid. As many things are, there's a bit of automaticity to it, but there's also a human element to which one would have. And to echo Mr. Whittaker's, our planners are phenomenal. They have firsthand knowledge of the geographic, geography of Cabarrus County, which is an advantage to us. So again, going back to something Ms. Escobar mentioned, when you have high-density areas, they know how to be able to break that up and best position that. When you have a right-hand turn or this is a right-hand drop only, they can account for that. When you know that there's a cul-de-sac or this is a one-lane bridge or these are, you know, factors only you would know by having driven these roads and knowing the local road network, they can apply that so we can lessen it. So again, it's a, it's a blended approach.
One of the planners even knows the, the color of the house that, that he actually drove in that area. So we, we actually, when we took him on, he's actually the planner for that area and he can tell you the actual color of the house. So that's how well he knows the area.
That's impressive. I did have one more I left out there. And also, one last word about bus drivers. I don't want, Mr. Treadaway will tell you this as a principle. They are the frontline identifier of what's going on at a kid's house, okay? The math teacher doesn't, it might get eight weeks in before they have an idea what's going on at home. But the bus driver sees where they're getting off the bus and what they're coming in and out of. And that is so valuable. When we're talking about what is better for kids and helping kids, that's one of the most valuable tools that we have. On the licensing part, you know, when people are struggling with licensing and things like that, is there any kind of pre-training that they go to to get them ready for the class so they can be a first time go as they go in?
We can, we can not, not really. We have the four-day classroom instruction. So the, so the DMV actually are the only certified individuals to actually do the CDL training with a PNS endorsement. So we can give them the study guide and we can give them the books, but they actually have to put in the classwork. And then after the classwork, if they're successful in the classwork, then they're issued a learner's permit, much like you were issued a learner's permit in your, your motor vehicle. And then that allows you to go to behind the wheel. So then, then the individual is put behind the wheel and they are, they, they spend four days with the instructor from behind the wheel standpoint. If you pass all that, you get your CDL.
Very good. Just thank you guys so much. Not enough praise, recognition, especially when things are tough, but thank you from everybody.
Thank you.
Okay. I think that's all the questions. I will say, all of these questions the board members have asked and how you've answered them reminds me of this radio talk show called Car Talk, but I think we can call it Bus Talk.
Bus Talk.
Yes. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
It'll be a podcast coming to you soon.
So board members, we'll move to 12.01, our consent agenda. We are going to vote on the consent agenda. We have moved one of these off of there. The CCS Opportunity School is not on the consent agenda anymore. It will be an item for action.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as amended.
I have a motion by Mr. Treadaway, a second by Ms. Lindsay. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay, the consent agenda is passed. Thank you, board members. We will move to 13.01, our preliminary guaranteed maximum price agreement. And this is for Coltrane Web and Beverly Hills replacement.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Kapicki. So tonight, again, I'm asking for the approval of the preliminary guaranteed maximum price, A133 2019. Standard form of agreement between owner and construction manager is constructed for the Coltrane Web Beverly Hills replacement project in the amount of $44,305,083. Again, this approval does not take place of the bidding requirements set forth by the North Carolina General Statute 143, 128, 1C, Construction Management Risk Contracts. The value presented to you is roughly $40,000 less than last week. There were some discrepancies in the fee structure with Rogers Builders. So it represents roughly a savings of about $39,000 and some change to what was presented last week.
Any discussion, board members? Ms. Lindsay?
Thank you. I'm, I'm the one who, who asked for these to be put on the
Sure.
the action agenda. So let me just start by saying the reason that I wanted to move the Opportunity School to the action agenda also and it all had to do with preliminary GMPs. And so I just, I have a few questions about a preliminary GMP
Okay.
and regarding the LGC as well. So we had some conversation last Monday about the LGC and one of the questions that I wanted to know is, was there ever a point in this process that the school system was ever told that we were going to be on any other agenda except for the October agenda? Was that ever brought to us that, and I, and I ask that because Dr. Kapicki mentioned several times last week that in his, to his knowledge, there was never a time when the school system was not going to be on the October agenda. Now you did ask if we could move it up and you were told no. But I'm just, I'm trying to understand if there was ever a time that October was not the agenda that we were supposed to be on.
So originally, we would have anticipated July, but it all got stalled because of various things taking place in the county. So yes, it was, that was our anticipation. And then however that process takes place at the county, when they make their application, what those conversations are, I'm not privy to those.
I understand. So when you say July, were we initially slated to be on the July agenda?
So typically, the borrowing takes place so that come fiscal year, that's when we get our money. And I believe maybe that would have been the, the June meeting is when it would have gone before the LGC. It would have gotten approved. The funding and the bonds would have been purchased and then it would have been funded starting July 1.
Okay.
That's the normal process, how it's taken place over the last eight years since I've been here.
Yeah, I think the initial meeting, there was some debate over the projects. I don't think it was, I don't remember, I don't recall if it was on the agenda or not. There was no motion.
Yeah.
I think the issue was there was no motion.
That's right. There was no motion made, so it just was kind of dead.
And so from my understanding, you know, in the conversations that were, were had on Monday regarding the LGC, most of the discrepancies, the issues lie within a completely different project that is not consistent with, with the school funding. Is that...
I would agree with that.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So are these documents that we are approving tonight, are they required for LGC debt approval moving forward?
We were asked to provide a contract agreement that carried a dollar value in the amount that was the bulk of the project that was approved by the governing board that they could present as a part of the supporting documents to the application to the LGC. It's, in order for us to do that, you would have to go through the full process for it to be a, what we would consider a, an amendment to the GMP, the Guaranteed Maximum Price. So a preliminary GMP is often done at the state constructions office website, or office in that projects that get held up through design reviews or delays for various reasons, state construction says, hey, we need to get you under contract so we can get things started. So they have language built into their agreements for preliminary GMP. So we internally talked and felt like this was the best scenario that we could present to the county for them to provide validation that this board supports the project as a whole. There's obviously other parts to these projects that we can't capture, FFNE and technology and technology infrastructure, all those various spending money or spending pots that we have to allocate for a project that we couldn't get contracted. And we, we gave, you know, we made them aware of that. They said, that's fine. They need the bulk of the big, big ask for that project to be, have some kind of approval by the governing board. So that's why we're bringing it as a preliminary GMP. And again, the language reads, this is going to change again. In, in the, in the coming months, as we go through bid packages and we actually go through that bid process, this number will change once again. It won't be the same amount.
Is that going to, so I guess that leads to a follow-up question of, with these just being preliminary GMPs and not a final GMP, is this going to be an issue that when we bring it before or when they bring it before the LGC in October, that it's a potential that they may not accept it because it is preliminary?
I couldn't speak to their level of whether they accept it or not accept it. They just wanted what that big ask was going to be as a part of that project.
So it is a potential maybe that preliminary GMPs might not, might not meet the qualifications of what the LGC is looking for as we move forward with this project?
We provided draft copies of what this looked like in the language and the documentation to the county to say, this is what we're going to present to you. Is that good enough? And they were all very receptive, said, yes, that is what we need. So that's all.
So I guess, you know, when you had mentioned that July potentially for the LGC meeting initially, you know, had nothing changed, then I would assume that the preliminary GMPs that we're just now voting on tonight would have been brought to us sooner?
No, we're going through this exercise because the, and you might need to jump in here, because of the, the type of borrowing that the county is undertaking. It is, it is not the same type of financing.
So, okay, so just to, just to kind of, kind of tie those pieces together because I want, I want to understand exactly what this all encompasses. But because the county, the LGC told the county that the funding, the way that they had been funding projects over this last period of time was no longer going to potentially be acceptable to them, they've had to now come back and ask us to change certain or provide certain information that necessarily had not been able, or had not had to be provided before.
Correct, right.
So that's why we're just now at this piece of voting on this and we're on the October agenda.
That's why we're at this juncture.
With a potential, and we don't know that the LGC is going to accept this in October and could potentially, to your point, and we discussed it last week, if it got kicked to February. So that means if that was the case and we did get kicked to February, do we have an opt-out on any of these contracts if the LGC doesn't approve what we present them in October?
Yeah, I mean, financially, this preliminary GMP does not necessarily tie this board down because ultimately, we can't execute a contract with them because there's no money in place to do that.
Right.
So, so once again, all I'm asking is that this documentation provides this board's support to the LGC for this particular project.
Yeah, I completely get that.
So that's what this does. So we, we're not really, yes, it is a contract in the sense that we've got the language written, but I'm not executing it with them. Now come October 2nd or whatever that date is, when we get the approval, then yes, we would execute that contract. Because again, that's just base language of the amendments that would be forthcoming to you down the road for the various bid packages that will change what that value is.
Right. And I, and I understand that. I think my questions though were, were really just because there was a lot of comment on Monday about that this looked to be like personal and that it looked to be as though we, somebody was stalling the LGC. And so I'm just wondering if there's, do we, do we have information?
I don't have a seat at that table, so I can't, I can't answer those questions.
Yeah, and by no means, I don't, I mean, I have to go back and look, but my comments were not directed at anyone individually. My comments were directed to summarize what has taken place up to this point and why we're at this stage. I have no, I, I'm not involved. I'm not at the table either. I was just, I was expressing and explaining what has occurred up to this point.
Right. And you said, I mean, to be clear, you said at the Monday board meeting that based on you, everything that... based on you, everything that you have been told by the county, we were still set to be on the October agenda?
That is my understanding, yes.
Yeah, we're, it's confirmed. We're, there's two applications that the county has, it's ours and another pot that they're asking for. So, there's two separate applications going at the October meeting.
Yeah.
That was confirmed at the end of last week.
Okay, all right. Well, I just wanted to get some confirmation on that. And like I said, all of this is
It is all new, and I understand that. It's completely different than what we've done in the past, and I apologize.
I've never heard of the LGC until July.
Yeah.
So, that was the first time I ever knew that we even had anything like that in place. And honestly, I mean, I feel like it's, it's set up for a reason, and, you know, thankful that they, that we have that as an option. But, you know, that being said, these are really all the questions that I have regarding that. I was just confused by some of the conversation that was, was going on Monday regarding the LGC.
I come to work confused some days.
Yeah, I hear you. I hear you. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other comments, Ms. Sandich?
So, if I remember correctly, there was discussion about the likelihood of all of this funding coming into play even before this conversation to begin with. When we talked with the county commissioners, you know, down on the floor there, there was concern about us not having the funding when it's go time anyway. So, how does that conversation play into where we are right now?
Are you referring to when we had the joint meeting with the commissioners?
Correct. There was conversation or questions asked about funding at that point. So, what if the funding is not approved? What if this is approved and we don't get the funding?
Or?
So, so how does that, how does that come into the conversation that we're having now?
I think I'm confused now.
Well, if we don't get the funding, as I said, then, you know, we're in a whole lot of hurt, because we need, we need, we need space, especially at an elementary level. So, that puts us in a bad position, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still a little lost, too. I hope that we are okay come October 2nd, and I hope that if we're not come October 2nd, or whatever day that is, that there is a plan B, because I do remember very vividly us having discussions about what if we don't get this funding and we approve this redistricting. That was a concern then, and it seems like we're there now. So, okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Walter?
All right, just going over this item. So, this is the Beverly Hills Coltrane Web Replacement, which has, is it still $51 million total budget? Is that still the budget, or is it more than that now?
No, it's 50.6 million.
So, 50.6, what essentially will be?
That's what the, the application, well, that's what's on the plan, that's a part of the application to the LGC.
Okay, so this is a fraction of that, right?
That is correct.
This is a portion, and you said the construction total is 44 million?
Yes, sir.
300. And then, out of that, we're paying a fee to the construction manager of 1 million, well, looks like 1.3 million, is that right?
Yes. Sorry, I did not bring that document with me.
It's on, you can pull it up.
It is, yes, sir.
There. But, question I want, just confirming, again, my understanding, is that fee is based on the trade contract or subtotal, or is it?
The total cost of the, total cost of work is what the fee is based on.
Total cost of the work, which was the first subtotal, is that right?
No, it's all, all of those subtotal one added down through to the bottom is what the fee is based on.
But you can't put the fee as part of the total cost and then charge your fee based on that. That doesn't, that's double-dipping. So, but apparently, that's not the case. So, that's what I want to understand, that that's not done.
So, you add all the lines up, whatever that number is, before you get to the bottom that says fee, you multiply that times 4% or 3% on this job, and that is what the fee is. And then, that's what gives you the 44,305.
It should be clear, and I'm looking at it, and it's not that clear. But there was a reduction, so obviously, somebody's done a recalculation.
Which is a good thing.
Absolutely, it's a good thing, but they didn't really show their work, so.
Mr. Floyd?
Did you get any questions from anybody over the week? Mr. Cullen?
No, sir. I received some questions yesterday, on, yesterday, Sunday, yeah.
Okay. I was just curious. A lot of times, we push these over, and then, nothing happens, and then, a lot of epiphanies happen up here on the dais, and it doesn't give you a chance, you're not prepared to answer a lot of them, and I just want to make sure we're being fair to you.
Thank you.
I know I didn't send any, so I do apologize for that. I guess the only question I have is, is there something about this that I don't understand that we wouldn't want to support, prove? I mean, is there anything out of the ordinary from this?
Not to my knowledge, no, sir.
Anything different than we've ever approved before?
No, sir.
We've built a few schools. How many roughly schools have you built since you got here?
This will be my eighth school I've been a part of since I started.
Okay. I'm guessing this is your first time spending like this?
This is the very first.
Double-checking.
Yes, sir.
And the bottom line is, if this doesn't work out, if we don't support this, and we don't push this, and we don't get what we need, that hurts kids in this district, from what I'm hearing Dr. Kupicki say. That hurts our children, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. I want to make sure we all understand that in the plainest of terms, and I want to make sure that word echoes up and on and up and on as we head into this October meeting, that the bottom line is, we have pushed the envelope too far, we have burned up all the time that we have to burn up, and the car's out of gas, we got to make it to the finish line here. And if we don't, kids in this district are going to be hurt by that. And as a school board, we cannot allow that to happen. Not only can we not allow that to happen, we have to advocate with everything we have against that, everything we have against that. That is our only job on this earth, is to do what's best for the children of this district. So, I just want to make sure that, as an October meeting is looming, that we say that into a microphone, and into wherever it needs to be said, for it to be heard where it needs to be heard. Thank you.
Just a quick reminder to the board to remind you, while we start this process in January of 2023, prior to the realignment, and through the last, well, almost 18 months, we've been talking about these various different steps, realignment, building projects, proposed schools, et cetera. And every step of the way, there has been good discussion with the board, good support with the board, and conversation with the county, and in anything that you do, you're going to come across some, some challenges, and maybe some obstacles, and things of that nature. But we continue to provide the information, continue to work the problem for solutions, and try to make sure that we continue to proceed forward as the, as we continue to have our plan unfold. And part of that is this particular project, and the one after this that we're recommending, that our system desperately needs. So, process is different, yes, but it's the outcome that we're after. And it never has changed or altered the long-term realignment and master facilities plan that we've proposed to the board, that if we all recall, we never, this is not going to be done in one year, two years, or three years. It's a long-term process to continue to improve the district, its facilities, the deferred maintenance, the many things that we continue to talk about. And again, I commend the board for their actions, because you've been very supportive. But this is the next step that we have to continue to engage in, to make sure that we're providing the best situation for all of our kids and all of our students in the system. So, again, I thank you for your support and your questions, but just be mindful that we've been at this now for, you know, going on over 18 months, and I thank you for that support. Mr. Cullen, Mr. Lauder, Dr. Bowers, you continue to do great work, and I appreciate that, too.
Thank you.
Mr. Walton?
Just two, two quick points. The construction manager risk process, that's somewhat new. We hadn't used to build schools like that, but we have lately.
Yes.
So, it is a little bit complicated, not quite understandable as a typical project had been done in the past, which is pretty easy to follow. And then, secondly, we've moved these kids out of the school already, so we need to build the schools. It needs to get done.
We need your support.
Without delay for that. And, you know, this is a key, this is a step to get that accomplished, because if it's not, then they're not, they're stuck there for a little bit longer in a temporary facility, which is not the best situation for these kids.
Can I make a motion to approve?
Mr. Tredaway?
I was just going to ask, are we going to vote on these separately or together? That was my only question.
Separately.
Okay. I second, I second that motion.
So, we have a motion to approve the Coltrane Web Beverly Hills Replacement Project. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, so there's a second by, okay. Okay, so we have a motion, and we have a, by Mr. Tredaway, and we have a second.
She made the motion, sir.
Okay, all right. Ms. Sandich made the motion, Mr. Tredaway made the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay?
Thank you.
So, we're going to move to 13.02. Is there any other conversation about this agreement that's with Francis', Mary Francis Wall Project?
No, I would like to just point out, Madam Chair, that same, same form of agreement, this is the addendum to the previously approved A133, which changes the section in that contract that discusses the guaranteed maximum price, and amends it to where it's a preliminary guaranteed maximum price, in the amount of $11,297,673. That, too, Mr. Walters, because you pointed out, and how they were calculating their fee, we had them to align it like the other projects, so it reduced this project by about $50,000 than what was presented previously last week.
And then, you had mentioned to me that the actual fee that they'll pay is based on the bids.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Escobar?
I don't have a question. I just want to indicate why I'm going to be supporting this. And I don't, I, to be honest, I don't really understand why anyone would not support this, because at the end of the day, the children at Mary Francis Wall need a new school. If you have ever visited that school, it is amazing what they're doing, like we've been saying all tonight, less with, you know, more with less. But these children are in trailers, or mobile units, whatever we want to call them, cottages, that some schools do. Whatever you want to call it, at the end of the day, these kids need a new school, and these teachers work so hard to keep those kids safe. And you talk about transportation and safety issues, the location of where that school is right now gives you a heart attack when you pull in. I cannot imagine having any kid run across that street. So, the idea of putting this school in a neighborhood that is walkable is a huge advantage. So, if you are not supporting this, I need you to explain to me why, because I don't understand why we wouldn't be looking out for these kids. What is different about these kids? Why don't they deserve the best?
Any other comments?
I was going to make a motion to approve this one as well. I don't do that regularly, but, you know, I had some staying about the decision to close Beverly Hills, but it's done. We need to move forward. Let's get this stuff going. I make a motion to approve it.
I'll second. So, we have a motion by Ms. Sandich, a second by Ms. Lindsay. All those in favor of approving the Mary Francis Wall Project, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll be the no. No.
Okay. We have one more we have to approve.
Yes.
So, this will be 13.03, which is Opportunity School Project. Any questions about this project?
I have no questions about it. The only reason I moved it was because it had to do with the preliminary GMP. So, if you don't have anything to add, I'll make the motion to approve it.
I don't have anything else to add, Ms. Lindsay. Thank you.
So, I have my motion by Ms. Lindsay, a second by Mr. Floyd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you all very much.
Yes.
Can I say something? I'm sorry. I just want to tell, could we put him to the leg?
That's what I was going to do, but, I got it. Yeah.
Okay.
So, again, before we close this evening, we talked an awful lot about a lot of things tonight, and I think we'd be remiss if we didn't point out the support of the board. So, especially in the achievement areas, when Mr. Sane gave his presentation, I want the board to know that your questions are welcomed. You know, sometimes the feedback is hard and difficult, but it makes us better. So, I do appreciate that. And as a group, we appreciate your input. Mr. Cullen, thank you for your diligent work and your work, and your knowledge, and the work you continue to do in the construction department. I can speak on behalf of the board that we all appreciate your efforts and what you bring to the table every time you present. You're very knowledgeable, and you're very astute on the matters at hand, and we appreciate that. So, thank you for that this evening. But again, as we close, I do want to thank the board, because those achievement numbers and the success that we have does not happen without your support. And I know that there are always a lot, a lot of questions, a lot of discussion, a lot of debate, but at the end of the day, I will say, and I have always said, your intentions are pure, and you have kids at the heart of the matter and everything that you decide. That is refreshing, that is important. And I would just continue to encourage everyone to keep our eye on that big picture, which is our students in the district. You do good work, and you're focused on kids and the right thing, and I do appreciate that support. So, thank you. And again, we will continue to move forward with that support. So, enjoy your evening.
Okay. Board members, we'll move to 14.01. I call for a motion that our meeting be adjourned.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Floyd, and a second by Ms. Lindsay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This meeting is now adjourned.